All right, podium mic test, one, two, three. Podium mic check, one, two, three. Attorney, mic check, one, two, three. Attorney, mic check, one, two, three. County clerk, check, check, mic twenty, oh goodness. County clerk, checking, one, two, three. County clerk, mic test, one, two, three. Manager, mic tech, one, two, three. Manager, mic testing, one, two, three. Meister, mic, testing, one, two, three. Meister, mic, tech, check, one, two, three. Dennis, mic, testing, one, two, three. Dennis, mic, check, one, two, three. Beatty, my, tech, one, two, three. Beatty, mic, testing, one, two, three. Lopez, mic, testing, one, two, three. Lopez, mic, check, check, one, two, three. Howell, how am I, testing, one, two, three. Howell, Mike, tech, testing, wow, testing, one, two, three.
All right, hopefully everyone can hear me. We're going to be starting in a little over a minute, so stand by. Okay, stand by for 30 seconds. 20 seconds. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5.
Well, good morning, and welcome you. Those that are joining online, those that are joining via television with KPTS, and those that are here in person today. If you look towards the order of business, there is a meeting agenda that you could have picked up at the door, we also encourage you to follow along, or you can follow along online, cedriccounty.org, go to the commission tab, all the meeting agendas are there, including all of the backup materials, all of that is open to the public. Got a good meeting today, glad to be here with my colleagues, and glad that you're here today too. So, with that being said, I'm going to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, January 24th, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item.
invocation to be led by Pastor Andy Wilmack with New Life Covenant Church, please remain standing for the vlog salute.
There's two scriptures I felt like the Lord gave me for this morning, Matthew 5, 14 and 16. You are the light of the world, a city situated on a hill cannot be hidden. No one lights a lamp and puts it under a basket, but rather a lampstand, and gives, and it gives light for all who are in the house. In the same way, let your light shine before others, so that they may see your good works and give glory to the Father in heaven. And Acts 4, 32 through 35. And all the believers were in one mind and heart, selflessness was not part of their community, for they shared everything they had with one another. The apostles gave powerful testimonies about the resurrection of the Lord Jesus, and great measures of grace rested upon them all. Some who owned houses and land sold them and brought proceeds before the apostles to distribute to those without, not a single person among them was needy. So as we pray, we pray for new wells of revival, we pray for new economic wells in Cedric County to be created. So Lord, we ask you for favor for our city and county with CEOs, government leaders, and educators, manufacturing firms that produce goods for the nation and provide new jobs for our people, technology to establish new markets, energy sources, and efficient solutions to grow as a population, laws and courts that measure with the justice and the freedom of our lands constitution, civil servants that encourage entrepreneurs and a media known for wisdom and truth, natural resources released, harvested, sold, and reproduced, education, books, and universities that develop mind molders who influence the influential, capital to build small businesses to provide services, arts, and culture, attracting both young and old, a medical community known for integrity and excellence, repentance from poverty, small thinking and envy, courage to recognize opportunities and make wealth, abundance to bless the world, and the prudence to save and invest, revelation to pass on wealth to our children's children. So we declare that when the righteous prosper, the city rejoices. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Pastor Andy, I want to thank you for joining us this morning. Also, I want to thank New Life Covenant Church, you guys are very, very active partners in the foster care community, and a lot of the foster care initiative you guys are working on to really help those children that are vulnerable in our communities. So appreciate you, appreciate you joining us this morning, and appreciate all that you're doing for the church. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, I am Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. This morning, Dr. Stedman of the Regional Forensic Science Center is here to discuss the Medical Death Investigation Professionals Week, and also the Overdose Data to Action Grant, which is also known as the OD2A. Dr. Stedman?
Good morning, Dr. Stedman, thanks for being here.
Good morning, Shelley Stedman, Director of the Regional Forensic Science Center, Chairman, Commissioners, and everyone joining us, thank you for allowing me a few moments to give you some updates about the crime lab and the coroner's office. This summer, Adrian Byrne came to you, and she requested permission to submit a grant application to the CDC for the overdose data to action grant local. This was a two-part grant, component A and component B, and component B of that was a forensic science center proposal, and that proposal was to collect data from drug information unrelated to local criminal activity. So in other words, to generate information from drugs being circulated in our community that was unrelated to criminal investigations. And our proposal, and what the CDC was looking for, was to collect drug and drug paraphernalia from overdose death scenes, and to see what type of drugs were being used in our community. And so that's what the Regional Forensic Science Center proposed to do, and as part of our obligation in completing our project, we have to report what we are finding to the CDC, and also to our local partners who are involved with treatment, and prevention, and our advisory board, and we're proposing that we may also be presenting some of that information to you, maybe in this forum or in your staff meeting, because we think that that might be interesting to you and the general public. We'll be using a dashboard, and I wanted to let you know that we've begun collecting those samples, and we've done so at 17 scenes of death so far, and in the next couple of months, we're going to be starting that testing. So I wanted to use this opportunity to give you a little trailer towards what might be coming your way, and also to make a couple of points. First, to point out that, you know, we're not just the county morgue, our mission does involve a lot of public health initiatives, we do collect data about cause and manner of death, and that information does go to the Office of Vital Statistics, because understanding how and why people die is very important in helping to determine how we can help people to live longer. And this is a really important example of how we're participating in an initiative to do that locally. The second point of that is to let you know that we have a team of medical investigators, and I have a picture of those ladies here today, who are going to these scenes and have, are spending a lot of extra time, they've gone through training to understand what drugs they're looking for, their specific pills and powders. The CDC is very specific in what they're wanting tested, and they've cross-trained with our drug identification specialists to know how to properly collect them, to safely collect them, to transport them back to our facility with integrity, and under proper chain of custody, so that they can be tested safely, and in a way that if they should be needed in the court of law, it's going to stand up in court. And the real reason why I asked to have the microphone today is to honor these six individuals, and to take a moment to bring to your attention that this week is National Medical Legal Death Investigation Professionals Week, and to speak to you in honor of the employees at the Cedric County Regional Forensic Science Center, and all of the others in our community, and other communities who represent decedents and their families, to ensure that suspicious, violent, unattended, unexplained, and unexpected deaths are investigated properly. I know that every one of you Commissioners have spent a lot of time and a lot of energy thinking about whether or not Cedric County is a good place to live, but I wonder how many of you have ever thought about whether or not it's a good place to die? And I want you to know that those six employees have made a career out of just that. And at Cedric County, for example, we worry a lot about whether or not a death is investigated in accordance with national standards, and sadly, in the United States, a lot of times they're not. And quite frankly, in the state of Kansas, there's a lot of jurisdictions where they're not. And these people, they make sure to deliver critical, comprehensive, and compassionate response to the citizens of Cedric County, and the people who visit Cedric County. They are your last responders. They are Sherri Beck, Linda Sifford, Shawna Cardinal, Morgan Snead, Rachel Hall, Kami Bates, and Tori Golden. These six ladies respond and listen to 4,000 reports of death a year. Of those 4,000 reports of death, they determine which of them, based on state law and statute, fall under the jurisdiction of the coroner, and of those 4,000, there's about 1,200 of them that do, and then they proceed to conduct the proper medical legal death investigation on those 1,200 cases. Collectively, these ladies have about 75 years of experience. They're the last responders to hundreds of death scenes every year. They're the last responder that a family member speaks to before their loved one is transported to the forensic science center for their last medical examination. It's difficult work, sometimes it's 110 degrees at the scene. Last week, it was 10 degrees below zero at the scene, and it's emotionally draining work, because every family member that they meet, and follow-up phone call that they get, is with someone who's having the worst day of their life because they lost someone they love. And it doesn't stop there, once the body gets to our facility, we have a team of three Once the body gets to our facility, we have a team of three physicians, three pathologists who conduct that final medical examination, and they work with four very skilled autopsy technicians. And specimens are collected that go to the labs for toxicology testing or DNA to identify the body, or a bullet might be extracted that goes for firearms testing. Data is collected, notes are taken that go to transcriptionists who help write the reports. Any year later, we might get a records request or a Kansas open records request. So we compile that record and send it to a law firm so that the case can be litigated. So there's layers of people in our facility, all of who are part of a medical legal death investigation. But at the end of the day, I think the front line is really these ladies right here. They're the ones who take the initial call. They make sure we have coverage 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They're the ones who directly deliver the answers, the peace, and the justice. They're the ones who directly deliver the answers, the peace, and the justice to the deceased and their loved ones. So thank you for allowing me to be here today to recognize these county employees for their very important work on National Medical Legal Death Investigation Professionals Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stedman. Any questions or comments from Commission? I would simply say that what you just shared there and what these six individuals do, I think, is we give a lot of attention to first responders naturally, and that's very important. But the last responders, those that do this work, this incredibly difficult work, it's important that we pause and give them the honor and the credit that they're due. What they do is not just important for investigative work, it's important for dignity and honor. And please let them know, Dr. Stedman, the six of them there, and what you do and your staff at the Regional Forensic Science Center, that they are greatly appreciated by this county and by this board. So thank you again for being here today. It's incredibly enlightening to share all that you guys do. So thanks. Nicole?
Thank you, Dr. Stedman. This winter weather this year has just frankly been nuts, and it's just been wrong, in my opinion. So Sedgwick County Fire District One has put together some tips to best keep you and your loved ones warm and cozy this winter without jeopardizing your safety or your home. Today, we'll show you a quick video on how to properly use your fireplace.
... to be a good thing. Since the dawn of man, fire has proven to be a good thing and a bad thing when used improperly. Even today, a good fire at home can be a bad safety risk. So in a world where Sedgwick County firefighters protect us, well, here's what they recommend. Have a professional inspect your fireplace and chimney every year. Your home should be also equipped with both smoke and carbon monoxide detectors that are tested monthly. Before building a fire, make sure the fireplace flue is open. Clear the area around the fireplace of anything that can burn and keep a fire extinguisher nearby. Keep children away from the fireplace and never leave the fire unattended. Make sure it's out before leaving the house or going to bed. Wait at least 12 hours after a fire to clean out the ashes. Scoop them into a metal container and set outside to cool completely. For more on fire prevention, visit Sedgwick County Fire District One's website.
You can also find tips on how to safely use space heaters in your home and other winter safety tips on their Facebook page. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
That's a great video. Is that a replica of any of the commissioners, that little? Is that what that's intended?
No, no, it is not.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that video, appreciate the tips, appreciate our fire staff for their recommendations, very, very important. Any questions or comments from the Commission? Very good. Thank you for the updates, Nicole. With that being said, next item. Madam Clerk.
Public agenda.
Didn't see anything signed up for public agenda, so next item.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of December 20th, 2023.
Commissioners, we've all had a chance to review the minutes. Unless there's an objection, I'd like to combine items A and B and make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of December 20th, 2023, and the meeting minutes of January 3rd, 2024.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments, item C, resolution appointing Max Jaden to the Sedgwick County Second District Citizens Advisory Board.
Very good. Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. Item C on this agenda is a resolution appointing Max Jaden to Commissioner Lopez's Second District Citizens Advisory Board. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt it.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, Max, thank you for being here today, and the seat was Bill Hammer's seat, and I was really concerned when he had to step down, just because he brought such a great voice for Clearwater and for rural farming communities. And so I knew it was going to be hard to find someone to fill, and you are the perfect person, and I'm just really grateful that you're willing to help with this. So thank you so much. I will move that we adopt and appoint Max to the Second District Citizens Advisory Board.
And I'll second. I have a motion a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And we do have someone from the Clerk's office. If you'd like to come down here to the podium and we'll get you sworn in, and you are welcome to share a few thoughts if you'd like.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Second District Citizens Advisory Board.
Yeah, thank you for your vote of confidence. I appreciate it. I feel like I've been a part of this for quite a while through various other organizations I've been with, so I just appreciate the opportunity to fill this spot. I just think in five seconds, or sitting over there thinking, my family's been living here in this county almost 150 years now, so it's just, so definitely it's home, and I have a definite desire to, you know, see things excel, and I appreciate, again, your allowing me to do this. Thank you.
Well, Max, we thank you, and I would take a point of privilege and just say that every Commissioner has a Citizens Advisory Board, but there's also over 30 boards that the public serve on here at Sedgwick County that give, provide valuable input, feedback, help to shape the conversation. And I would just encourage anyone, if you want to step and serve, public service is not just an elected role or a staff role, is we need people to serve on these boards, and it's very, very important. A large variety of boards. You can go to our website, sedgwickcounty.org, and see what those board and opportunities are, but you stepping up and serving, sir, is greatly appreciated. So I'm sure you'll do a great job. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
New business, item D, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, Series A, 2024, of Sedgwick County, Kansas.
I believe we have our Chief Financial Officer, Lindsay Povrizzo. Chief, good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners, and thanks for stating my name for the record. So we are here this morning to complete yet another step in a process associated with a bond sale for several projects that are near completion. Those are listed in your documents. We have one special assessment, we have four bridge projects, and we have a portion of the 911 remodel. Also with me today is Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell Bond Counsel. I'll ask him to speak to the process, but essentially what we're asking you to do today is allow us to set up the bond sale, to conduct it on February 6th, and then to bring it to you for ratification on the 7th. I also want to take this moment, I did send you all a note yesterday. I know you get sick of hearing it, but I don't get sick of saying it. This county, again, through a process just a week or so ago, was again rated AAA with a stable outlook by S&amp;P, and that, again, is the highest possible rating. And I did a little research just to put that in context. In the United States, there's more than 3,200 counties or county equivalents. We are one of 106 counties that have this designation. So truly, this commission, its financial management, this is something the organization has to participate in, they have to follow the rules, our clean audit opinions, all of those things go into this. So I want to congratulate you, I want to congratulate the organization, I really want to congratulate the finance staff who do all of this. So thank you for letting me take that moment. Now I'll ask Garth to come and speak through the actual specifics of today's item.
Very good. Good morning, Garth. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the county's bond counsel. I just want to echo Lindsay's statements. The credit rating for the county, especially over this number of years, is an amazing thing, and that is definitely something to be proud of. So congratulations to all the staff in the county for being part of that. With regards to the specifics, so this resolution before you is, as Lindsay mentioned, it authorizes the sale of the county's general obligation bonds in order to finance the costs of those six projects that she mentioned. How this is structured is that this sale is authorized to be on February the 6th, which is actually the day before the normal county meeting. That is in order to have, potentially have a better turnout, so then we don't have to hold the sale as early in the morning before your meeting on the 7th. And so how this is structured is that the sale is scheduled to be at 11 o'clock in the morning on February the 6th. Public competitive sale, as most of your bond sales are. Based on the evaluation of the bids that are submitted, working with Lindsay's staff as well as Baker Tilly, the county's municipal advisors, we'll determine which of the bids is the best, and so long as that bid meets certain parameters in this resolution, including a principal amount of not to exceed $4,150,000 and an interest cost of not to exceed 4.5%. So so long as that best bid is within those two parameters, then it'll authorize either the county manager or the chief financial officer of the county to actually award the sale of those bonds and sign that bid form. Once that occurs, our office will revise all the necessary documents, including the bond resolution, which will then be considered by the Board of County Commissioners at your meeting the next morning, at which point you will be able to adopt that bond resolution, ratify the award of the sale of those bonds to the best bidder. Closing for the bond issue is scheduled to occur on February the 28th, so that's the day when the purchaser of the bonds will deposit the purchase price with the county, and exchange, the county will turn over possession of the bond to the purchaser at that time. So with that being said, I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Very good summary and briefing. Appreciate that, Garth and Lindsay. I would just echo also on the AAA rating, before we get into the questions and comments on the bond, is that we congratulate the Finance Department and all the work that they do. You have a great staff. This is financial stewardship, not just from the policymakers, but those that are in the staff. So thank you for your good stewardship and your staff. Make sure they're aware that we appreciate them. So questions or comments? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. One other thing that Lindsay didn't pass on was there's only two counties in the entire state of Kansas that have a AAA bond rating, and we were one of those two. So I want to congratulate Lindsay and her entire staff for everything that they've done. One quick question for Garth. When we say that we'll go up to 4.5%, normally when we're trying to bid on something or go out for an RFP, we don't say the highest number. So how do we get the best price when they know we'll go all the way to 4.5%?
So that's the nice thing about this being a, with the competitive, blind bid sort of process. So in essence, each of the banks will submit their own bid based on what their customers are going to be able to turn around and buy that from. And how that competitive process works is that you're competing blindly against other banks, so you want to come in as low as possible in order to win that bid. If everybody comes in around the 4.5%, then it's unlikely that they're going to get the best bid. And so they're still going to be very aggressive with their bids based on the market conditions on that morning of February the 6th, because they're more concerned about being able to be able to buy these bonds to turn around and resell to their customers. So that's why, that's the drive for them to still come in at a very low competitive interest rate.
Very good answer. Thank you, Garth. And again, thanks to everyone in finance. It's not, this five commissioners, I know we're pretty conservative, but the staff is the one that brings the information to us so that we can stay conservative. Thank you.
Very good. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much. Well, this, sorry, this is Lindsay as well. It's just really exciting news that we get to celebrate this again today. And, you know, one thing that I just want to hit on for people watching is this also saves our taxpayers significant money through lower interest rates, and so it's just, it's another thing that we can do to help our residents out. So I appreciate the work. I can't imagine how much work goes into this, and it is definitely appreciated by all of us, and just thank you so much for your work, and thank you for being here.
Comments, questions? Seeing done, Garth, I also want to, we've been thanking Lindsay and the team a lot, too, but you deserve a lot of credit. And thanks. You're a good partner to this county.
Thank you very much.
And you do good work for us, so we certainly appreciate that and everything you've done to, not just this project, but others, too. So thank you, sir. Okay, so I will make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, Series A, 2024, of Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Second.
I have a motion a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Very good. Thank you again, Garth and Lindsay. Appreciate you both. Next item, please.
Item E, CON 2023-00060, conditional use in the county for an event center in the county and waiver of supplementary use regulation 3-D dot 6 dot N N number 7 to continue business as a wedding slash event venue located on the southwest corner of North 215th Street West and West 37th Street North, 3660 North, 215th Street West.
Very good. Appreciate it. And Scott, welcome. Before we get to work, all the commissioners have been briefed on this specific zoning item, so I want to give us an opportunity to declare any ex parte communication, if you'd like to do so.
I've had none. Thank you.
I've had none.
I have had conversations with the applicant via text message and in person, so it is in no way, in no way is it going to determine my lack of objectivity in ruling in this case.
I've had none as well.
I've also had none. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, Scott, let's get to work.
You betcha. Good morning. And I just wanted to say, good job on reading the title of this one. I'm sorry, we always have very long titles, so. So in this case, the applicant is requesting a conditional use in order to allow for an event center to operate on the subject site. And as well, they're also asking for a waiver of the Unified Zoning Code supplementary use regulation, which requires a 100-foot setback for the event center buildings from residential zoning. And I'll talk more about each of these in depth in just a moment. Now, this item is being heard because the Citizen Advisory Board and the Planning Commission recommendations for approval have different conditions. So they both recommended for approval, but they've got different conditions, and we'll go through that. In terms of the request, the conditional use, well, the applicant has indicated they're requesting the conditional use in order to allow for an event center to continue to operate at the site. So the applicant has operated an event, at an event center at this site since at least 2021, and it was allowed by right at that time when they first started because the Unified Zoning Code allows event centers by right on rural residential zone properties, provided that the site is at least 20 acres in size and that it complies with 12 conditions that are listed in the zoning code. So what happened is that the applicant sold some of their property, and as a result, the site is now approximately 16 acres in size, and hence the need for the conditional use. Now about the waiver, the applicant is requesting a waiver from the supplementary use regulations, which would require a 100-foot setback from buildings on the site to nearby residential zoning. And they're requesting this waiver because, and I think you can, you can kind of see it in this graphic, I'll try and highlight it here with the pointer, there's the northernmost building on the event center site is located roughly 10 feet from the property line to the north, and that, and we'll talk more about that property. And this would be in violation of the 100-foot setback. That building is not the largest event center building on the property, because they've built a new, larger facility here that's not shown in the aerial. The adjacent property to the north was owned by the applicant, and according to the applicant, was sold to the event center's general manager, that property is owned rural residential, and hence that's what triggers the need for the waiver of that, of that buffer there. It is important to note that the recommendation from the Planning Commission is for the, that the requested waiver be granted, but only for the existing buildings. The staff report indicates the recommendation of the waiver and approval of it, but fails to note that it was recommended only for the existing buildings. And so staff, and thank you to Kirk for catching this, have watched the video from the meeting, from the Planning Commission meeting, and confirmed that the Planning Commission recommendation for approval of the waiver was limited only to the existing buildings. And I know that that's new information from the briefing, but I do want to bring that to your attention, and I apologize that I didn't catch that sooner. I would note- I would note that limiting it only to the existing buildings is consistent with what has been done with other cases. So in terms of the property, as you can see here, the site is generally located to the east and south of 215th Street and 37th Street North. It is, as indicated, roughly 16 acres in size. It's zoned rural residential and currently developed with an event center and an assortment of related buildings on the site. In terms of context, properties to the north, southeast and west are all zoned rural residential district. Properties to the north include one that is developed with single-family residence, that's the one that used to be owned by the property owner, by the applicant in this case, and other properties that are in agricultural use, you can see further to the north. Property to the south is developed with a single-family residence. Properties to the east and west are in agricultural use. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides additional information about the need for the conditional use, the need for the waiver, and an overview of the parking requirements. In terms of review, on December 4th, the District 3 Citizens Advisory Board considered the application, voted to approve the request, subject to the staff recommendations, and that vote was eight to zero. No members of the public spoke on this item at that meeting. On December 14th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item and considered the application. No members of the public spoke on the item. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request. It was 11 to zero with the following changes from the CAB recommendation. And those are, condition number six would be omitted, and that is a condition that would prohibit outdoor amplified music. And condition number nine would be modified to correct the height limit for lights to 30-foot, to 30-foot height limit and to allow for lighting to trespass where necessary for security lighting. And that the waiver for the 100-foot setback be approved and limited only to the existing structures. No protests were received against this application. So in terms of action, it is recommended that the planning, that the Board of County Commissioners approve the conditional use for the event center and a waiver of the supplementary use regulations, which would require the 100-foot setback, and that that would be conditional only on the existing structures. And would authorize the chairman to sign the resolution and authorize the resolution to be published, and that requires a simple majority of three out of five votes. Alternatives include the following: you can override the MAPC recommendation, make alternative findings, and deny the application. That would require two-thirds majority of four out of five votes. Or as always, you can return it to the Planning Commission for further consideration with a statement specifying the basis for the failure to approve or deny the application. And as always, that requires just a simple majority. And so with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and maps that we've got. So here's the aerial of the site that's outlined. This is the zoning map. You can see it's rural residential in this area. This is the map from the comprehensive plan, showing that it's outside of an urban growth area. Here's the site map that was submitted by the applicant as part of the application. And it shows where some of the newer buildings have been built on the site. This is the protest map and also the notification map. So it goes out 1,000 feet. And as you can see, there were no protests that were submitted against the application. Here are photos of the site and the surrounding area. So here's the largest building, the event center on the site. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, very good. Appreciate the summary. And again, we've all been briefed and discussed this item in detail. The applicant is here today. We're going to give them an opportunity, if they so choose, to be able to share, and we can ask them questions. But in the meantime, do you have any questions for Scott? Questions or comments? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you very much. And thanks for the briefing. As far as this facility, it's probably a poster child for how to do venues correctly. I have a number of venues in my district, and this is not one that I ever get a comment or a complaint off. So I want to thank them very much for that. But it kind of brings me to one of the questions, the only question I honestly have. And that was the change that the MAPC made on outdoor music. That's one of the complaints that I get from other venues is the outdoor music. And right now, I don't see an issue, but if you look at the, at the slide that you've got up right now, there's a number of lots around that that could be developed in the future. And what my concern is, is that I don't want to pass on an issue to a future commission because something's built there, and now they're not happy with the outdoor music. So I'm not sure if it's for you or for Kirk, but I, I want to make sure that, and I'd like to hear from the Stockhamers also on this and see if they've got any issues about maybe some kind of a sunset on this, if something gets developed around it. And only kick the sunset in if development happens nearby. So what, Kirk, what kind of options do we have to make sure that there's not an issue in the future?
Kirk Sponson, Deputy County Counselor. In terms of sunset provision, it is true that it has been applied in the past in certain conditional use cases wherein it's set for a specific time, 10 years, 20 years, whatever it shall be. That would be the cleanest and easiest way to accomplish some sort of sunset provision. At that point in time, if the applicant did want to continue with the proposed use, then they would have to come back and go through the application process again. If there were any changes to the, to the golden factors analysis, that could be considered at the time. Surrounding, yeah, character of the neighborhood, things of that nature might be considered at that time, and they might be viewed differently depending on the facts. Now, as for it only kicking in if there's development around the area, off the cuff, I do have more concerns with that approach. That is a little bit more subjective. So I would reiterate, I think the cleanest thing would be for a set amount of time sunset.
Okay, well, the only reason I brought that up is I don't want to kick a sunset in if there's no development around there. That then causes them to have to come back and ask for something to happen in the future. So I'm trying to figure out how that, as development grows, that if there's some concerns, that we could address those without all of the things that happened to, in my district right now with outdoor music.
I appreciate that. And the only answer I have right now is a specific timeframe. I apologize.
I appreciate that. Maybe we can hear from the Stockhamers and see if they've got any ideas too. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Other questions or comments from, for Kirk or for Scott? I, I do, just some clarity. It might be Scott or Kirk could probably take this one, but there is no noise ordinance in the county now, correct?
That is correct. There's no set noise ordinance regulations within the unincorporated areas of the county.
And we look at event centers simply because of the, is a special use of sorts? And that's why we discuss noise restrictions even, or amplified music restrictions? And this is limited to the scope of event centers though, correctly, or normally?
I think, I would defer to MAPD. I think it has a greater capability for that. Certainly, some of the analysis you see with these event centers is, once again, going to the impact on the neighbors. What, what's the lighting impact? What's the noise impact? Sometimes you see, what is the dust impact, things of that nature. But I would defer to Scott on whether it's specifically focused on event centers or where it extends to other applications as well.
Yeah, I think Kirk pretty much has that covered. I would just say, yes, this is, with event centers, that's when we see noise, lighting, and parking typically come up.
Okay. I think the challenge in some of these, in some of these event centers, and I would agree with Commissioner Dennis, that the specific applicant that we're discussing today does business really well. And they do a lot of outdoor weddings, which would use amplified music during an outdoor wedding. And I think there might even be one festival of sorts that, so that's why this is really unique. I understand the direction Commissioner Dennis is heading, but I wanted to clarify that there is no noise ordinance in the county, but the event center conversation is because of the unique use that's done at these places. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure the public was aware. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on that point, we had a, another property rights case came before us just recently where this was a discussion. And I guess, although we don't have a sound ordinance in the county, I do think that's reasonable for us to have conditions on event centers specifically that we can establish. And I suggested some ideas back during that discussion. I talked about a decibel level at the property line. Again, I've done some research since then. That's actually a fairly popular way to do this. Again, I think that the, the applicant in this case is an excellent person. I don't, I'm not that concerned about this one, you know, being extremely loud for the neighbors. I would anticipate very little, if any, complaints from the neighbors on this one because I know the applicant's very, he does a good job managing the property. But to Commissioner Dennis's point, you know, we can't know what the future would hold. If we don't set the rules now, then in the future, it might, different applicant and different commissioner will have potentially a different problem. So I don't know how to do this, but I, I've said it before, and I'll say it again. I think that MAPC needs to establish, if you, if you will, a way to mitigate this in the county. I, I'm disappointed that we have another property rights case similar to the one we just sent back, where this is obviously the one and only concern, but there seems to be no guidance in the, in the proposal as it comes to us of any way to mitigate, what sound level are we talking about? If it was, if this was 100 decibels across the property lines, that would be very offensive to the neighbors. But if it's, you know, I hate to pick the number, but if it was something more moderate, if you will, I think that this is a fine proposal. So to have outdoor music is reasonable for this venue, and I think that they ought to have the opportunity to do that, opportunity to do that. I just think it needs to be reasonable. And so again, you know, should we set something in the, in the, in the background on this, and there seems to be some type of violation, at least it gives them a chance to sort this out in court. And I think that that's what, our job today is to set up reasonable relationships, relationships between these neighbors. And I think we should do that today. But I don't want to, I don't want to create sauces from the bench either, Stan. So I feel the same way about this one as I felt about the one previous. Thank you, Chairman.
Other questions or comments from the commission? The applicant is here, Mr. Brock White. You're welcome to, welcome to address the commission or maybe even some questions on our end for, that would be helpful and might clarify the amplified music that is existing now. And I would say also that event centers typically, they've prohibited amplified music, and we put a use in because of the uniqueness of this event center and the use of amplified music for weddings. So, Mr. White?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I would just like to say, first off, thank you for this opportunity. As most of you know, I know most of you have been to the venue. We do, most of our ceremonies are outside, where there's small amplified music for the ceremony. We've been a venue for seven years, but our building has been built since April of '21, or that's when we started our building. And so now most weddings or receptions are inside. I would say maybe, you know, maybe five to 10 a year are actually outside. We do, I, some of our neighbors are family, and so I talk to all of our neighbors on a regular basis. And we have a very strict policy with our bride and grooms. 11 o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays when you're done. During the week, Sunday through Thursday, they're done at 9:30. So, and all of our neighbors have thanked us for that. If we ever get a phone call, we shut it down right then and there. So we're very receptive to anything that our neighbors say. I think, Scott, you might have saw this, that we do have one festival a year. So that is on a Sunday, but it's only, I believe it's noon to, before the sun goes down. So not normally a complaint. We've never had an issue. We give all of our neighbors free tickets to come on in. So I'll hold for any questions.
Very, very good. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. And I appreciate you being here. But I still am kind of worried about all of these properties that are platted, that are around you for the future. Right now, there's not an issue, but there could be an issue in the, in the future if we don't have any kind of limits on, on how much noise goes off of your property and can impact the neighbors. So Commissioner Howell had a good point also. We might be able to measure decibel level at the property line, but I don't know what that decibel level would be today. So I don't know how to define it. So I'm not sure how to, how to make a motion to approve it with a decibel level at the property line, unless staff has some kind of an idea on that or, or sunset. So I'd like your feedback on what we can make sure, do to make sure that in the future, there's not an issue. There's not an issue now.
Right.
And I know that you're not getting complaints from your neighbors because really they're a long way away. But you, you've got property platted all around you. And so something can be developed there, that there could be an issue in the future. So do you have any recommendations?
I don't off the top of my head. I will say, it's hard to see in this picture, but where we do outside music is in the, basically the middle of our property. So if you go, I mean, honestly, even if you go to the building, it's hard to hear it. But if you go along the property line, there's many times that I'll be in my house, in my living room, which is, I'm the general manager, so I'm right there in that corner of 37th and 215th, and you can't hear anything. So I don't have a recommendation, but I will say, since we're in the middle, our neighbors really haven't complained because it's hard to hear themselves from the property line.
Okay. Would, would you object if we added something so that we don't have a problem in the future?
I guess I would say it depends what it is.
Scott, do you have a recommendation, maybe on DB level or anything like that?
Well, I, I don't have a definite recommendation, but I would point out, just to help, hopefully help with the conversation, is that given the intricacies and some of the challenges sometimes with the decibels and the measuring of that, a common way that we see that noise is often controlled or limits are through time. And so I don't know, maybe if there's a time where the operations of the venue could occur, and they could have the amplified music outdoors, but then a time perhaps when that should shut off and it's therefore for the neighbors for their quality of life. So I just want to offer that that is a common thing that we see, and it's easier to enforce.
Let's hear from the applicant again then on, on outdoor music. Do you have an earlier time cutoff than what you've got in, in the recommend, in the request here? And which I believe, go back and find that here. It's on 9:30, Sunday through Thursday, and 11 o'clock on Friday and Saturday.
And that's exactly what we do right now. Yeah, we are pretty strict on that. By 11 o'clock, not 11:01, but 11 o'clock, they have to be done. And so that's what we follow right now.
But the question is, do you have any problem with us saying outdoor music has to end earlier than those times?
On the weekdays, it would not be a big deal. I'm not really concerned with weekdays. The problem with all wedding venues is, you know, we've contracted these people and sold the venue up until 2025. So, I mean, it just is a little difficult now changing rules on them since we've told them that they can do outdoor music until 11 o'clock. That would be my biggest concern.
Well, we didn't solve it there. Scott, do you have some other recommendations?
And I might add, I mean, there was discussion of a sunset, that maybe we out, that we do a sunset. We had talked, Kirk had said something, 10 years, 20, I mean, we could even do a five-year sunset of some sort. That way we can really study this issue internally. Go ahead, Scott.
One quick comment, sir. If there's a concern about bookings through, that bookings have been made all the way to 2025, and if the concern is that future development could occur, you could establish a start date for when the specific condition would apply so that it would start at, in 2026 or something like that for a specific condition.
Okay.
Well, Kirk, do you have a recommendation then, based on that information?
I, I agree with what Scott Waidell suggested, how we would fashion this. And once again, are we talking about limitation on amplified music outdoors, outside of certain timeframes? Is that what you're discussing or contemplating? So, so the way we would phrase this, would we, we would be potentially adding a, an additional condition that amplified music shall only be permitted outdoors between the hours of, you know, whatever you want to be, 12 P M to 5 P M. This specific condition shall not go into effect until January 1st, 2025, 2026, whatever the will of the board is.
Yes, please. Commissioner Lopez?
But we're basing this off of if there is development. So if we start this in '26 and there's no development, then what? Because it will be pointless at that point.
The way my proposed condition was, was that there was no consideration for exterior development. Yeah, I, I mean, I understand your point. The wording, I, I mean, I guess I would, I would go back to the board. What's your definition of development? I mean, there would have to be objective standards.
Could we do something where we write in that in five years from now, we take a look at the area and the surrounding development, if there's been any, and then figure out if we can make an we can make an adjustment? Because it seems like we're doing a lot of hypotheticals if something were to happen, but we don't know if that's going to happen.
So that would be potentially withdrawing a conditional use without set standards, without set violations. Once again, I would, it would be cleaner just to have a sunset provision, five years at which time you could reanalyze the situation and the circumstances.
Would a sunset allow us to do a five year, and then if nothing is different, then it extends for another five to 10 years, or what? I would just hate to have, to have them go through this whole process again. If nothing's changed and we don't feel like there needs to be anything different, I would just hate to put them through that again unnecessarily.
So certainly, so my concern here, and I don't want to go into too much detail, certainly, if we want to discuss this more in depth, executive session, you know, attorney-client privilege, we can certainly go that route. The one thing I'm focused on is, in some way, writing this that would be construed as potentially taking away conditional use without clear violations of the present terms or standards. That's what I'm trying to avoid here.
I see. Commissioner Lopez is done with her comments. I'll go in order here with Commissioner Dennis while they're contemplating.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Right now, I've heard all the arguments, unless one of the staff comes up with some brilliant idea in the near future. Probably the cleanest thing is a sunset, five-year sunset. That way, we can see what development is in five years, and if there needs to be any changes, we could, then the future commission could handle that at that time. And that way, everything is exactly as was approved by the M A P C, except for the fact that we'd have a sunset on item six.
Commissioner Howell?
I don't, thank you, Chairman. I don't mind the idea of a sunset, but to me, I think the applicant said they typically do not plan to do amplified music after 11 o'clock on any day. Is that what they said? So here's what I would suggest. Again, I think a sunset for five years is fine for review and maybe amendments to the conditional use. But to me, if you were to put something in there, you know, this is making sausage from the bench, but let me just say, here's how I would word it. I say, activities related to the commercial use of the venue, comma, amplified music shall be limited to the hours of 10 a.m. to 11 o'clock p.m., and shall not exceed 80 decibels as measured at the property line. And again, that'd be the end of the conditional use. And here's the point, if the neighbors don't complain, it's not a problem. If they do complain, it's up to them to prove it. It's up to them to take you to court. I don't think they're going to complain if you do your job. But if they decide to complain and it gets to be a problem, they have a tool to hold you accountable. So to me, as I worded that, it deals with the issue of hours, it deals with the issue of level. And you wonder what it's 80 decibels. It's loud traffic. It's right next to a highway. It's a loud vacuum cleaner. Okay? That's pretty loud at the property line. I don't think you'll exceed that. I just want to tell you, I've had a lot of complaints about Club Rodeo in the past. I went and measured the sound with, I have a sound meter, did a survey, went inside the venue, measured music on the dance floor, at the bar, all over the facility, in the parking lot, in the lobby. As I got to the street, I couldn't even measure, the road noise exceeded the music coming from Club Rodeo that was emanating from inside. And they have a very loud, very loud system, okay? But you couldn't hear it at the road. And so even this type of language at Club Rodeo would not be a problem for their venue. So I don't think it's a problem, but it does put something in place that if there is a concern about exceeding 80 decibels at the property line, and someone wants to deal with it, they have a way to bring you back in, back into reasonableness, okay? So to me, amplified music shall be limited to the hours of 10 a.m. to 11 p.m., and shall not exceed 80 decibels at measure, as measured at the property line. And again, if there is a civil dispute, at least we set them up for a potential discussion in front of a court.
Kirk?
If I may, Kirk, sponsored by Deputy County Counselor. Commissioner Howell, just in relation to your timing, I would want to point out that another condition proposed might be somewhat duplicative with your hours. Number five indicates all events shall not start before 10 a.m. and shall end by 9:30 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 11 p.m. Friday and Saturday.
Again, I understand that's in there. I'm talking about, for the issue of amplified music, I just want to say, every day of the week, they shouldn't have amplified music in terms of the activities related to the commercial use of the facility, you know, that exceeds those dates and times, days and hours. Again, this is in addition to the hours of operation. So again, if they turn music on before the event starts at, or whatever, or the event wants to, ends at nine o'clock, but they have music going on after that for some reason, this deals with that issue. So I understand your point. I don't know that my language is necessarily not relevant still.
Chairman?
Please.
Could I maybe supplement some of the discussion on this? A couple of different things. I think I could note, maybe part of what Commissioner Howell was asking about, condition nine in the draft resolution talks about if there's violations of any of this, including what Kirk just mentioned. If any of the terms and conditions, the conditional use, there is an opportunity, that's standard language in our conditional uses for the zoning administrator to bring the conditional use back up and see if the property owner's conditional use should continue. There can be an action for that. It's not something that's done commonly, but it is common language in our conditional use resolutions. Along with that, I think I would just note, I don't, in terms of setting a decibel limit, I don't believe any county staff has decibel equipment. I don't think the sheriff's office does, so that's something that if we pass that now and we were expecting to enforce that, we probably would need to get equipment and training for our staff to be able to enforce those provisions.
May I, Chairman? Please, yes.
Again, I think the burden of proof would be on the, on those that are complaining about the level of sound. By the way, measuring sound actually is a science. I don't think that necessarily someone who's not in the business of measuring sound understands the weightings of how to measure this. It takes special equipment that has to be certified, has to be trained on how to use it. I don't think that just having a sound meter necessarily is sufficient for enforcement of this. I'm not suggesting we enforce this. I'm suggesting if there's a civil dispute, that those that have a dispute against the applicant have a tool by which they can go in, provide evidence of a certified, if you will, exceedance of 80 decibels. And by the way, you should also know that this is a logarithmic scale, so 80 decibels is actually quite loud. And the idea that, I think this is even going to come up at all with that language would be very unlikely. But again, I'm not suggesting we burden the sheriff to have to enforce this, or buy equipment to certify it and train people how to use it. That's not the intent. The intent is it sets up the, if there's a dispute between property owners, that they have a tool to bring evidence before court that says you've exceeded what you were allowed to do by this conditional use.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The problem that I see with Commissioner Howell's suggestion is that we're doing a conditional use, and so if someone violates that, we have to have proof that they violate their conditional use if we're going to pull it back. And by going, putting the burden on the public next door that might be developing something, that does not give us proof that they violated the conditional use. And our M A P B C D doesn't work nights, and they're probably the ones that we would have to have to do the enforcement or the sheriff's department. And the sheriff's department isn't, I don't think, going to go out and start measuring decibels and see if they're violating the rules. So I appreciate that, but I think that it defeats what I'm really trying to solve, and that's all these little squares that we see around here that might be developed in the future, whether or not that there's an issue. And if they're not developed in the future, there isn't an issue. So I think the cleanest thing right now, honestly, is a sunset on this, but I hate to bring the applicant back in five years if there's no development around there. Is there any way that we can set a sunset that says, if there's no development, that the sunset continues until there is a development after five years? Scott, I told you we were going to noodle this from the bench to death, so I apologize.
While they're chatting, if your permission, Commissioner Howell has a comment that you'd add. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm looking forward to that answer. But here's the reality, is 100 years from now, it still matters. We're talking about five years from now. Let's say that everyone does a great job and there's no problems in five years from now. We're setting this up forever. We're going to have future commissions and future owners of this building. I think that five years is just a moment in time. Just because there's no problems then doesn't mean there won't be a problem 20 years after that. At the end of the day, I think this is reasonable in terms of burden of proof. Again, I think that the, those that would have complaints against the applicant, they have a burden of proof, and they would present that scientifically. So if a future commission, if you want to have a sunset, if a future commission has evidence presented to them that's scientifically generated and produced to that commission at that time, they would have that data. I'm not suggesting we have any responsibility whatsoever to ascertain these exceedances. I don't want, I don't want to be in the business of measuring sound. I just want, I just want the people around there, if there is a significant problem, they have the burden of proof. They go get scientific data and back that up, and they come to the commission meeting, or they go to a court, and they deal with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I just want to make one comment, and that is, if there is development in the area and someone moves in, they know what they're moving in next to. So I would, I'm having a hard time trying to limit things for the possibility of future development when it's very obvious what neighbors would be moving next door. And if they don't want to live next to an event venue or music at that time, don't move right next door to it. I mean, that's kind of, I just, if I was looking for a place to live, and I'm like, I don't know if I want to live next, well, I would probably go somewhere else. But that's where I'm at with it. So I will defer to Commissioner Dennis on this. This is your district, and I want to be very respectful of that. But I do, I do kind of struggle with trying to do a lot of limits if it's something that it's easy enough to just not build there, or to go down a block, or, you know, whatever that might be. But thank you.
Okay. Good points. Commissioner Howell?
To Commissioner Lopez's point, I think that having this in place would encourage those people to know there's protections in place, that they have some control over what might happen. Without some type of language, then they truly are at risk. And I would have second questions, you know, I would second guess myself about trying to live right next to this without something reasonable in place to protect a property owner right next door. So again, having this articulated provides protection to those people around it forever. And that's kind of the point. I understand not having any rules, that's certainly fine, but I don't know that having a rule is negative if it actually encourages someone to say, something bad next to you is not going to happen. So I still think this is reasonable language. Thank you, Chairman.
Curtis Scott, any additional follow-up that you'd like to add?
Kirk sponsored by Deputy County Counselor. Theoretically, a way to define development could be a set number of residences built within a set area. For example, 10 residences within 1,000 feet. So that's an example of what might be a development. Now, in terms of extending, extending a conditional use without, without having them go through the full expanded process, it could be a situation where we say, you know, in the event, that this conditional use shall be for five years, at which such time, if there are less than 10 residences built within 1,000 feet of the property lines, then the applicant would be able to apply for administrative adjustment or approval by the M A P D for additional five-year periods until that, until that development standard is met. I think maybe we could go that route. With that said, I would recommend that the commission specifically reference golden factors that essentially weigh on tipping the scales on readjusting analysis. Which of those golden factors are implicated by this analysis? Which of the golden factors would be impacted by further growth and development in the area?
Appreciate that feedback and insight. I would add to the conversation. I think everyone has made valid points, and I think everyone understands what we're trying to accomplish here, and we're trying to do it with a good applicant, too. So I would just say that trying to come up with the solution here today might be a challenge that isn't fair to the applicant, that is trying to operate a good business. And we certainly want to be in favor of ensuring that our small businesses in this community can do so without a whole lot of burden. I would ask us to entertain maybe that we just look at the five-year sunset, and then we ask M A P D, M A B C D to really come up with a plan so that we can have a conversation about, more robust conversation, instead of trying to do it here today without all the information. I think that might be a reasonable, a reasonable step, because I think everybody's making valid points. I just think that we've got to be very careful about overdoing some things here as well. So Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you. And I agree with you. Right now, we had a discussion on this yesterday. We couldn't come up with a solution when we had the two, two and ones. And I told you that at that time, we're going to talk about it a long time at the board meeting, because we couldn't come up with a recommendation, and we are. So possibly, it might be better just to defer this for two weeks and have staff work with the developers, and see if we could come up with something that we all agree on. Because right now, we've got several different ways that we could go, decibels, we can go sunsets, we can look at property around it and how it's developed and so forth. But I hate making sausage from the bench, and that's what I knew we were going to end up with today. So I would like to make a motion that we defer this for two weeks and bring it back to the board at that time. I don't think there's a big problem with anything else in this. It's just this one issue, and I think that our staff is smart enough to work with the, with stockmers and come up with a solution that is good for everybody.
I'll second that, but I just want to add that we want to work in what's best with you guys as well, because we understand how great of an operation you're running, and please don't think that this conversation has anything to do with that, because it really doesn't. But with that, I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Appreciate the conversation today. Madam, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Meisner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Motion carries. Appreciate it. So you guys will get to work with the applicant and give consideration to, long-term, what a nice framework would be for these types of conversations. So appreciate the conversation today. Appreciate everyone being here, so. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Park Use and Controlled Access Agreement for DAM Jam.
Mr. Kaufman?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. Before you today is a park use and controlled access agreement at Lake Afton Park with an organization named A Production Company LLC. The agreement spells out the terms and conditions related to an event planned to be held July 18th through July 20th, 2024. Last year, this event was also held in July and received a thorough briefing regarding the after-action report at a B O C C staff meeting last week. Based on comments during that discussion, I contacted the promoter and have implemented some changes from the previous agreement. Ticket sales will be limited to 9,000 attendees. Alcohol sales will end at 11:30 p.m. each night. This contract also formalizes the process related to standby EMS services as referenced in County Policy 5.201. The contract requires the sheriff to determine staffing ratio for off-duty officers based on projected attendance. Damage repair and insurance requirements are again included in this contract. If pyrotechnics are part of the event, a permit must be obtained by Cedric, from the Cedric County Fire Marshal, and no other fire district involvement is required at this time through county or fire district resolution. Finally, fees include a $25,000 special event fee and a camping revenue share of $5 per space per night. Revenue generated in 2023 at this event totaled $27,315. I would be happy to answer any questions, and we stand ready to implement the action deemed appropriate by the board.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. A couple of questions. Thank you. A couple of questions to Tim. The $25,000, does that cover all of our costs for EMS, fire, emergency management, Sheriff's Department, everyone that's involved in this?
I believe that it does. The, the sheriff's deputies that are on-site are off-duty officers. There's a, a separate payment agreement for those. EMS costs are recovered through the, the contract as we have. And based on estimates of what we've seen related to fire district involvement, the $27,000 in revenue vastly exceeds that cost as well. So from my perspective, the way we've looked at this, the county is a, it's a net generate, revenue generator for the county.
Okay. I'll have some more questions after we hear if there's anyone from the, from the proposed event. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the bins for Tim? I believe the applicant of the agreement or the for DAM Jam is, if you're here, we, we invite you to happy to hear and if you can stand for questions, we'd be grateful.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman. My name is CJ Wilson. I have a big dream of putting on an event here in Kansas. I've lived here my whole life. My family has owned business and of course been in the aerospace business. And this is a dream that I've had because of the low tourism in the state of Kansas. One way to be able to inject income into our community is through tourism. That brings new dollars to our community that we can circulate. It was exciting last year to have people from Florida and Wisconsin and Arizona kind of coming to see what we're doing. And we also like to platform just Kansas in general and our region. I'm from this area my whole life, born and raised in Derby, Kansas. And so I would really like to see this event be able to proceed and we are all about safety. So we don't really like to be seen as a party. We do have a goal and a plan and we're very precise about our plan and we work real close with Julie. And in addition, on the EMS side of things, we actually pay an additional cost for that. So what we paid the $27,000 last year went to the county, but we also paid an additional check to the emergency staff to cover those. We don't want to be without them, but we do know there's a cost that comes with it and we are, you know, having an event with large numbers of people. We also have alcohol-free zones because not everybody drinks. That's coming more people are, it's a, I think it's called sober culture, something of that nature. That's becoming more prominent. The younger generations aren't really into drinking alcohol and things like that. But as well as, you know, some of our demographics are like 28 to 65. We have an, an older crowd there and safety is of great importance. In fact, this year, we kind of moved buildings around to make sure that where we had our information station last year will now be a security and sheriff's headquarters. So they'll have their own building on-site while the event's happening right in the center of the camping. So we try to think of everything and Julie's really great to work with. She kind of makes sure we keep things lines out. So we meet regularly and then we have monthly meetings and we encourage all of you to come on that second Wednesday if you're curious about what we're doing.
Ms. Wilson, appreciate that. We agree Julie Stimson is very good to work with.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Can you address the issues that you had in, with the state and then in Butler County and how that you're going to mitigate those so that we don't have similar issues?
We didn't have any issues with Butler County or the state of, Lake of El Dorado. Those were policy changes by the state lake. I mean, you may have noticed that country stampede never returned to Tuttle Creek Lake because they're moving away from those public events. The state lakes have made the choice to not hold those large events because since the pandemic, they don't need camping or to encourage people to come out. They are coming. Their weekends are full. So there wasn't a, a bad relationship or we, you know, we paid for emergency services. We never had to go to Butler County for approval, but we always worked very strong with them and, and in close quarters with them. We also paid them for their emergency staff services. So when we left El Dorado Lake was not, it wasn't an issue or a problem. It was a policy change. And so when we reached out to Mark, which I've worked with in the past, I was like, hey, and he said, it would be great because we need more revenue here and we want to help increase, you know, the lake and make it a better place to come to. Adding sand this year, developing the volleyball courts. We've helped with some water and plumbing and we bring high-pressure sprayers in to clean things and just make sure that the lake looks really nice and that not only are we representing ourselves, but we also represent the state of Kansas and Sedgwick County. So we try to make sure things look nice out there. But as far as any issues with El Dorado Lake, I'm not aware of any. I do know they had a festival before, which is DAM Music Festival, but we are not a part of that organization at all. We are A Production Company LLC. We are completely different. We did not work with them. We don't, you know, that is, there's no combination there. And I do not know exactly how things ended for them in 2019. But when I went and talked to them, we had no issues being there or at the end of the, of the time. So it wasn't a, like, discouraged situation. It was just, they had a policy change and not much you can do about that.
Okay. And last year, I think you were programmed for eight or nine, 10,000 and you had about 2,500 or so from what I saw when I was out there.
Correct. So, and our goal this year is 9,000. I foresee six to seven maybe. As we did upgrade our, our talent because we want to bring in people from around the country to see us.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Tim, I know this isn't a direct department that you lead, but you've obviously in coordinating this had conversations with EMS, fire, with, with Julie. Any concerns there that we should be made aware of?
I think the only common concern, anytime you gather that many people together, there's an opportunity for personality conflicts which can turn into issues. I, I know that the vendor, the promoter has security staff in addition to the off-duty sheriff's deputies there. It, it, anytime you concentrate people in an area like that, there's an opportunity for problem. But last year's event went very well. No problems to speak of. Public safety officials are always concerned about the safety of the public and we're really thankful for them in that concern. But there don't appear to be I, I don't know that there are any specific concerns that we can point to and say, this is a problem and so we should be careful about it.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think the, the, the conversation, particularly Ms. Wilson, is about, we want to make sure that we're not depleting resources to the rest of the community. It's a big conversation. We want to make sure that the taxpayer isn't overburdened by, by some of the things that are happening in regards, so not the, the quality of life and the enjoyment, but making sure that our public safety services are, are able to be adequately resourced throughout the community. So the questions are in guards, in regards mostly to that. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to pass around some pictures to, to the other commissioners. There's a lot of them didn't get out there last year and I wanted them to see how much resources that we provided last year. And what you'll see from those pictures is that we have a large fifth wheel out there that emergency management operated out of. We had fire out there. We had boats out there. We had gators out there. We had ambulances, fire apparatus. We had, we had a lot of resources out there. And I think we dodged a bullet last year because we only had about 2,500 people there and the weather was pretty nice except for a storm that came in and dealt with that. But my worry is, and, and also last year, we had blue-green algae and people weren't supposed to be in, in the lake. Some of them were in the lake I saw when I was there, but we dodged the bullet. We really did. We had a, a lot of resources out there, but I don't know if we even had enough resources if we'd had issues going. Because if you'll look, there are no pictures of the sheriff's department because I did not see them out there. So if we put 9,000 people out there and it's 110 degrees and our EMS is going to be overworked, they can't, they'll be able to triage and, and work with them there, but we're going to be bringing ambulances in from outside because we're going to need all of the ambulances and EMTs and paramedics to treat the issues there. So I think it's going to stress our EMS staff and our resources. Fire is separately funded, so I don't know how we transfer the funds for the cost from the money that we're getting in over into the fire department because they are a complete separate funding stream for our organization. I have not heard from the sheriff. I did read, read the after-action report that was provided. And I just have concerns about this. If we have 9,000 people out there and the conditions are different than we had last year, I don't think that we're prepared for it. So at this point in time, I'm not in support. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curious, do you have answers to some of those questions? Do we, do we have a way to provide some of the funding back to the fire district? Is that something that's part of this plan?
Rusty, if you're available, you might help us with that or any of our deputy chiefs are also here too, but I, I think that would be helpful.
I had just a couple of other questions that are kind of like that. So thank you for coming down.
Deputy Chief Nelson is here and he is subject matter expert. But I'll just say that relative to the context last year, it was the first time for it to be here and emergency management helped pull everybody together so that they would have a good safety plan as this thing launched for the first time. They did have resources out there, which like Riverfest or any big event, particularly on public property, where you're going to have gatherings of large, large gatherings of people. You want to have, you want to be proactive and prepared for events that could affect those people who are there for that event. With that said, I think they learned some things from last year, coming into this year, and there's been conversations among public safety officials regarding this year. As far as fire is concerned, there was no mechanism to compensate them last year. I think they ended up with maybe a couple of people out there at any given time to monitor what was going on at the lake in case there was any water rescue needs. I think the position is this year, there's nothing in county code that requires fire beyond consultation on pyrotechnics to be involved in this. There's nothing in the contract that speaks to fires presence or compensation for fire. There is policy on EMS standbys being compensated. And there is language in there that a safety plan has to be coordinated with the sheriff. And the sheriff is staffing that with off-duty deputies that are paid by the promoter. But as far as fire, there's no provision in law or in contract right now that requires them to be on-site or provides for their compensation. And so with that said, I've talked to Chief Williams and Deputy Chief Nelson kind of has the layout of the plan. Basically, I think if there's no compensation available to staff with fire personnel in off-duty status, in other words, they're being paid time and a half by the promoter or by the county in some way, shape or form, that they will be responsive to any call from 911 or from the sheriff or this, or, or EMS for their assistance. Beyond that, they're not sure that they'll have the staffing or that their staff would sign up for off-duty, extra-duty work to go out there and, and hang out in the first place. So Kevin, you want to, you have anything else to speak to that?
Kevin Nelson, Fire District. That's a huge vacation time for us. So we're already having a big overtime burden on our people just to staff our stations regularly. So if we would try to dedicate more equipment and more people, that might be difficult for us to come up with that. If it's contracted and the fire board wants it to happen, we'll make it happen. But if it's up to us, we'd rather not dedicate those units. I'd like to talk about the finances if you guys want to.
And I always worry about talking about fire during regular business and, and vice versa. So I do think that since this is about DAM Jam, I think it's reasonable for us to have this, this discussion now. I, I do think, I don't want to leave the other posts short on response units because again, I did attend this last year just because I had a speaking engagement out there. I, I spoke at this event by invitation. They asked me to come out and on behalf of the county and I was glad to do that. But I did see quite a few fire apparatus there that day because the American Legion had their, well, the Nation of Patriots had their flag arrival, which was a conclusion of the nationwide transportation of that, of that, of that flag arrived at the DAM Jam and that was, it's quite the event actually. So we had fire trucks with, with aerials up and flag draped and we had, I'd say a fairly large presence out there for fire. And again, I, I guess I have another question. You know, we have other community events, whether it be parades, we have Riverfest, where we see public safety, you know, response vehicles engaged in some of those things. I know, for example, the Thunder Games, there's ambulance there, but I believe they pay for that. Okay, they're paying for that. But there's other events where I, I don't know, it sounds to me like we just basically show up because it's kind of expected from the public that we have fire trucks and fire personnel seeing at these, some of these events. And so I don't know if there's actually any dollars that flow to the organization by our presence there. Riverfest is a great example. You're talking about, you know, 10,000 people. That, that's nothing compared to Riverfest. That's, that's very large. And it's a, you know, eight days or whatever it is. So comparatively speaking, I'd say that's a much larger event. And I don't know there's any, any dollars there at all. I, I know we have all kinds of public safety folks involved in Riverfest. Do you like to comment?
Well, River Fest is in the city of Wichita, so we'll go down and we'll be a part of the parade, which is a real short time commitment and we don't have to pull people in. Typically, if we're, if we're busy and we don't have apparatus available, we don't participate in a parade. Otherwise, it's just, we'll send one unit down. It's on-duty people. So there's really not an increasing cost to the fire district.
We have lots of ambulances and EMS folks around. And again, from a taxpayer perspective, we do have Wichita Fire, I think is engaged in providing visibility as well.
Sure they are.
I see Chief Landerman's here to make a comment.
Chief Landerman with EMS. As far as River Festival and things like that, yes, we are part of those. We do staff those with off-duty personnel. We have somebody there supervising the event during, during our operational hours and events within the city like that for major events that, those are covered within our city-county agreement with the city of Wichita. We, we are there at those events.
You say off-duty, but those folks are actually getting paid. They're getting paid, in other words, we're not, we're not moving resources around to make that visibility. We're, we're using extra people that are being paid overtime to be there by choice.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's the same with, out at Lake Afton with the DAM Jam. Those are off-duty personnel that are staffing for that, for that standby. And, and that was correct. CJ's correct. They paid separately for that, for EMS standby.
So I guess my final question on this would be, I did see sheriff out there when I was there. I believe they were there. Again, in fact, they're part of this contract. There, there's some responsibility for them to actually have a sheriff's presence at this event. Am I misunderstanding that? They will be there, correct?
Good morning, Commissioner. Colonel Brian White, Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. We did have a presence there. They were paid off-duty to be there. We did have some struggles filling all the positions that were available. We also had our on-duty staff work over. So essentially, second shift worked an extended shift and third shift came in early because we wanted adequate personnel in case there was an emergency response that would exceed the staffing that we had on-site. We have a basic formula that we apply to events like this that allows us to project what staffing needs are appropriate. The concern when you look at an event like this, that's unique like this, is that response times are extended when you're away from where a lot of emergency personnel are currently staffed. And I worked with the police department for 29 years and was involved with the Riverfest. That's centrally located in the city of Wichita. And as part of those plans, we manage and staff that event with people that are dedicated to that event. But we also manage our day-to-day operations to ensure that we have adequate staffing if the need arises for additional personnel to respond. So I think you have to keep in mind that there's an, an operational need to manage the event as it's occurring moment to moment. But when you have a large-scale event that requires additional response, you want to make sure that you're, that you have those kind of resources available. To be candid with you, when you're looking at 9,000 people and you have a large event, you're going to need other resources. Obviously, the folks there that are, will, will try and mitigate that on the front end. We'll dedicate additional personnel like we did last time to be on-staff and ready to respond if, if things begin to escalate. But we're talking about probably around 20 to 35 additional personnel that could respond to the event. But in a large-scale event like this, you're going to need even more resources than that. And so when you're, when you're further away from the city and some of those And so when you're when you're further away from the city and some of those other additional resources that would respond, response times are going to be extended. I would say to kind of, to kind of take one step backwards is that understanding how to manage that and to adequately staff it is an understanding of what the attendance will be. And so communication about the expected attendance levels directly affects how many personnel you want to have on hand and available. And so as the event approaches, we need to have clear communication from the event managers about what the expected attendance is going to be so that you can properly plan.
Thank you, Colonel White, and say, because this is limited to 9,000 people, I assume that our response plan is based on 9,000 people as well. Do we have enough people to do that?
We can, but we also would start to talk to other entities about what that might look like. So to give you some perspective, this last year's event had 800 ticket sales. Now, in addition to that, they hand out passes to people that are promoting the event, which they also were in response, which gives us to the amount of people that were in attendance that day, which, as stated earlier, was around 2,500, may have reached 3,000 at one point. So you have ticket sales, and then you also have people that are quote-unquote "paying customers." They have an invested interest in the event and its success, and I think the promoter could probably talk to that more appropriately. But again, understanding exactly, so when we're talking about 800 ticket sales for last year's event, and we're talking about 9,000, so when we start to project and understand what our staffing levels need to be, if you can imagine a moment, that that's a much larger number than what we had at this last year's event.
Thank you, Colonel White.
Yes.
I guess to the folks that are running this event, is there some estimate on, again, you say 9,000 ticket sales, what was the maximum number of people we would have there then if it's, it can be, it sounds like it can be far in excess of the number of people buying tickets?
No, the 9,000 would be the cap on the tickets of who could come in. I don't know where the 800 ticket sales came from, because we had about 2,300 ticket sales, and then we have sponsors that receive tickets, but they're mainly in our VIP section, and those come within their sponsorship package, so they're also ticket sales pretty much, so.
Okay, I don't, thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just don't like the conflict of having two narratives, it was 800 or 2,300, I don't know which one to believe now, but.
It was 2,300. So, and we do have staffing and volunteers and security and sheriffs on-site at all times, so that also increases our numbers, but not included in what was sold.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank, just quick clarification from fire. So you won't have the boat out there this year, you won't have the drone that can drop flotation devices and so forth. You're not going to have personnel on-site.
Our intention would not be, if we need to, if it's, if we are, if there's a contractual obligation or something where there's going to be specific compensation and we can make sure that we can staff it, we would do that. If it's just pulling it out of our day-to-day operations, we don't intend to be on-site.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez, anybody? Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Chairman, I guess, again, I was probably in favor of this, because I don't think we should, I don't have an opinion on whether this should or should not happen, but I do want to make sure we hold the taxpayers harmless. And so if there's a cost to having fire out there, and it sounds like they need to be there, I'm a little concerned in fact that this contract doesn't actually put any structure in the, there's no structure in the contract to deal with this issue of an expectation of having fire personnel at the event, and then there's no way really to compensate the county for their participation in the event. So I, to me, it feels like we're missing a piece, and I don't feel good about simply just, you know, passing this without some type of consideration to the taxpayers on that part of this contract.
Okay. Julie, do you have any additional insight you'd like to provide?
Julie Stimson, Director, Sedgwick County Emergency Management. Not able to answer your question, Commissioner Howell, I came up just to kind of talk about, as this event approaches, like CJ mentioned, there's meetings that we attend to, the operations meetings, so we get that update of where things are at, how many tickets are we selling. We start getting a better idea of what their true risks are. Last year was the first time, as several mentioned, we didn't know really what to expect. When we say 9,000 people, it doesn't mean we have 9,000 people there all at one time. It's spread out throughout the event, it's a two-day event, there's different music, music shows, if you will. And we learned that last year, when we were planning for 10,000 people, we were thinking 10,000 people lining up at MacArthur on Two Way Road, you know, and what this was going to look like, and it definitely is more of a phased-out arrival of folks. A lot of this has to do with risk assessment and what risk we're willing to accept. Again, having resources pre-stage, again, because we are in an isolated location out there versus being here in the city, and it's on county-owned property, so there's a couple of different factors in how we normally handle large-scale events. But a lot of it is risk assessment based on what we know at the time, and that changes, and that's why we attend these meetings that CJ and her team hold for us and invite us out too, so we can ask questions and figure out where things are at. That will continue this year. So as we get closer to the event, if we see higher risks, if we know we're going to have a heat wave, we may start talking about, you know, do we need to negotiate another contract? Do we need to add resources out there? But we won't know that until we get closer to the actual event.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the bench? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I really tend to be in favor of this, but I'm hearing some just concerns about a couple of things, especially dealing with fire and what that looks like. So I don't know if there will be any favor to do this, but if we wait two weeks so we can continue the discussions around fire, because it does seem like maybe if we could address that piece, I think a lot of us might feel a little bit more comfortable with that if there's a desire from the board to do that. I guess I would make a motion to defer for two weeks, I forgot that part, thank you.
I would second that. I'm inclined to support events, but I'm hearing a lot of trepidation that causes me a little cause for concern to make sure that things are shored up appropriately. I think we have a responsibility, a burden of responsibility to ensure that we're making sure fire is on-site, that we're not depleting resources, fire is compensated in the Fire District appropriately, so. I want to have respect for Commissioner Dennis's opinions, this is his district. I'm in favor of events, tourism is a big part of what we do here, but I also, the biggest part of what we do here is public safety, so I want to make sure that things are shored up there. So I would second the motion, but Tim, do you have any additional comment that you would add?
Again, we're prepared to implement whatever the board commands.
Okay. Commissioner Meitzner had to step out on an urgent issue. He's able, he's able to call in, but I, Nicole, do we know if Commissioner Meitzner is able to call in now or? Okay. There's a motion and a second. Madam Clark, why don't you go ahead and call the, call the roll, and then if we need to make adjustments, we can.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
And to clarify this, is defer it for how long? Two weeks? Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. So motion carries, two weeks, and then we'll address fire, we'll address some of the concerns and have some more robust conversations, and then we'll go from there. So appreciate that, thank you. Okay, Madam Clark, next item.
Item G, reconsideration of item three of the minutes of the January 4, 2024 meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Sanofi-Pastor-Vax Value Agreement for Immunization's Health Department.
Okay, good morning, Joe Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, and as was mentioned, this item was originally brought before you on January 10, and the decision was to defer, provide more information, and now we're bringing it back to you for your approval. And this is the Sanofi-Pastor-Vax Value Agreement for Sedgwick County Health Department, and the recommendation is to accept the pricing from Sanofi-Pastor Incorporated at the rates listed, and this will establish contract pricing good through September 30 of 2024. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate everyone throwing this, because I really had one question, and that's what the fiscal note was for the county. And it took me a couple of emails back and forth before I got exactly what I was asking for, but the fiscal note is zero. It's covered by insurance, it's covered by state, it's covered by everybody but our taxpayers. So I was very concerned with some of these vaccines, costs like $500 almost per dose, and I wanted to make sure that our taxpayers were covered. I am happy with the answer, I am ready to move forward with this at the appropriate time, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I did some review on the topic of travel vaccines, and I don't think I've got all my answers to my questions. Just as a review, the Commissioners, none of you were here at the time, I don't believe, but back in August of 2016, the county manager at that time, as well as the CFO at that time, and actually, it sounds to me like not just three, but maybe four, or even possibly even five Commissioners at that time seemed to be in agreement that the county should not be involved in the travel vaccine program. Travel vaccines at that time were, had been a program that had been in place for 10 years. So it's not historically something the county has always done, it's a 10-year-old program. But one of the reasons that the program existed, at least initially, was some of those vaccines are a little bit difficult to get. And because of that, the county was able to stock that and provide those vaccines. But one of the questions I had was at that time, and I'll ask the question again, is, you know, the private sector should do things if possible, and the government should step in. If that can't be done in the private sector, then perhaps we have a role to play. And I think that when it comes to folks that can't afford vaccines or whatever, trying to get kids into schools, I understand a lot of these vaccines, I think, are necessary in terms of public health. But there's a couple of things here on travel vaccines, if someone's traveling abroad, they're buying an airplane ticket, and they're making a choice to travel, they're planning ahead. I'm not sure that we have a compelling reason to have some of these vaccines stocked by taxpayers, especially when the private sector at that time, we had, we had representatives from the, from Dylan's come in, and I think there are a couple of others that came in, and said that they were more than willing to provide these immunizations to the private sector. They would work with the private sector, the cost would not be substantially different, but they felt like we were competing with the private sector, and for that reason, the county did stop providing vaccines, travel vaccines in August of 2016. Then, because of an election, I think it was, I'm trying to think about the dates of this, maybe it's public, maybe it was public response, I'm not sure exactly what caused this to happen, but maybe because we had different personalities on the Commission at this time, but in February of 2017, we had reconsidered the item and reestablished travel vaccines at that time. So, looking backwards, again, I would say that Commissioner Dennis is right, there is a very little cost, in fact, maybe no cost, maybe $1,000 difference between the cost of the vaccines and the reimbursements from folks that are receiving those vaccines. The only difference would be, back in that time, again, I dug this up, there was staff costs that were not considered in the cost of the vaccines. At that time, the fiscal estimate was about $21,000, cost to the taxpayers, property taxpayers, as a consequence of providing travel vaccines. That is what it is. So I'm trying to be vigilant not to, not to spend property tax dollars, any way we, anything we can do to eliminate spending property tax dollars, I'm interested. And so, yeah, I would say this is more of a political decision. The question is, should we be involved in doing that or not? The contract before us today is, if we choose to continue, this is the price. Am I saying that right, correct, Joe?
Yes.
So if we choose to continue, this is the price schedule for vaccines. I guess I'd ask the Commission to consider whether or not we should or should not continue a travel vaccine program. That's probably not for today. I'll support the motion today to approve this schedule. I think we need to have another discussion about other travel vaccines as something we should be involved in, knowing there actually is a cost to the property taxpayer, and knowing that the private sector does in fact want to provide these vaccines, and knowing that people who travel abroad should be planning ahead, and they can get these vaccines no problem. So I think unfortunately, this got overly political, and I don't think it needs to be political. I just think that by principle, the private sector is glad to step up and provide these. It actually reduces costs to the taxpayers a little bit, I think that should be our policy, so. I will support a motion, was our motion, Mr. Chairman, to do?
Not yet, no.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts for reconsideration of item G, with the caveat that I would like to have a future discussion on travel vaccine program.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clark, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, thank you, Joe. Next item, please.
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on January 18, 2024.
Joe, a long time no see.
It's been a while. For the record, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, and this is the result of the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on January 18, and there are three items to present to you at this time. First item is Sedgwick County Transportation Comprehensive Operations and Technology Implementation Plan, and that's for the Department of Aging and Disability. This recommendation is to extend the contract term for a transportation comprehensive operations and technology analysis and implementation plan with SRF Consulting Group Incorporated. This additional period will begin January, retroactively January 1, 2024 through August 31, 2024. Our second item is the ARC GIS Product Maintenance for this year, 2024, and this is for the Division of Information Technology. Recommendation is to accept the quote from ESRI Incorporated, they are doing business as Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $50,049. And our final item is the Aerial Imagery Collection Product, or Project, excuse me, for Division of Information Technology, and this recommendation is to utilize the State of Kansas Contract 049015, and that's with Serdex Corporation, and this is good through December 31 of 2027. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have on these three items, and I recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments from the Commission? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clark, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Howell. Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Before we move into consent, I want to make a note that Manager Stoltz had pre-arranged travel, so he's not with us today. So Deputy County Manager Tim Kaufman is running the show today. It's not his first radio, he's been to a few of these meetings before, but I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that Tim was sitting here today and acting managers, so. County Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Kaufman.
Commissioners recommend approval of items I through Q.
On consent agenda, do we have any questions or comments, any of the items here?
Chairman, I do.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to say, I was, I did ask for a deferral of hiring three people into com care. I wanted to understand why the cost seemed so high. I did meet with staff, and I am satisfied, this is reasonable. If I understand correctly, I would like to repeat one thing, this is not property tax-funded, this is.
That's correct.
Grant, and then, of course, repayments through insurance or whatever, okay. There's three folks we're hiring in three of these items that are very specialized, what they do with com care, and that was my concern, and so my concern is satisfied, so I'll be supportive of the consent agenda today. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items I through Q.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clark, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. I think now's a good point. Why don't we recess? Don't you need to make a motion to recess, or we can just, okay, we can just recess the BOCC meeting and move into the governing body of Fire District Number One? So I'd call the meeting to order, governing body Fire District Number One for Wednesday, January 24, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present, next item.
Public Agenda.
There was no items in Public Agenda, so next item.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of December 20, 2023.
Commissioners, we had a chance to review the minutes. If there's no objections, I'd make a motion to combine items A and B together. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Fire Meeting Minutes of December 20, 2023, and the Fire Meeting Minutes of January 3, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners recommend approval of. Commissioners recommend approval of Item C on the Consent Agenda.
Okay, Item C. Any questions or comments for Item C? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda, Item C.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Commissioners, do we have any discussion we would like to have under Other? Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not. It's one of these things where the discussion, I think, it bridges the gap between the Fire District and regular BOCC business, and so I don't know what the appropriate time is, but considering, there have been some discussions in the news regarding a fire response that happened on January 7th, 2024, I'd like to have a brief public discussion about that. Is this appropriate time? Because this is potentially going to have some discussion that talks about 911, Sheriff and EMS as well. So I want to make sure that it's an appropriate time to talk about this now or later.
No objections.
Well, and Chairman, if I may.
Please, Justin.
County Councilor Justin Weiner. Commissioner Howell, in particular, is this about Fire District Number One response, or generalized to other Fire District, or Fire Department response?
It is not necessarily about Fire District Number One. It is a, it's really about the entire call. Again, I know we're receiving quite a bit of criticism in the public eye regarding our response to this call, so I'd like to talk about that just briefly.
Sure. And Commissioner Howell, I apologize, that clarity changes what, kind of what my thought process might be slightly. It might be more appropriate during the Board of County Commissioners, Other portion of the agenda, if, because if it's tied more to 911 and other services the county provides as opposed to Fire District.
Well, with that, I'd probably not mention anything at this time, and I probably will talk about this in just a few minutes when we get to, or on the other, on the regular agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Very good. Any other questions or comments or discussion under Other for Fire District? Seeing none, next item. We have no executive session for the Fire District, correct, Justin?
That's correct, Chairman.
Okay. Looks like we finished our business for the Fire Districts. I'll adjourn the meeting for Fire District One and reconvene the meeting of the Board of Cedric County Commissioners. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Ms. Tanya Cole, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am here this morning to give a legislative update. So this is the third week of the legislative session, and we received our first tracking report on bills, and so it looks like we are tracking 17 bills for 2024, and then we still have some bills from 2023 that are alive in 2024. As far as our legislative platform, we have Chris Labrum, who is our MABCD Director. He is actually going up to the Capitol tomorrow, and he will be testifying on Senate Bill 52, which is the nuisance abatement bill, and so he'll be testifying with the House Committee on Local Government. We're also tracking bills such as Senate Bill 341, which Commissioner Howell is very knowledgeable on. This is the bill regarding driver's license and those with revoked licenses to be eligible for restricted driving privileges. So we are keeping an eye on that, and as soon as that gets a hearing, we're going to make everyone aware of that so we can provide testimony on that. I might just mention a reference to Watkins Public Strategies' weekly update that came out this week, and the Veterans Tax Exemption, which is House Bill 2036. If you'll recall, that passed last year with a vote of 123 to 1. And last week, in the Senate, they held a hearing on this, and in the Senate Committee on Assessment and Taxation. So this bill would exempt up to 100% of the assessed value of a veteran's homestead property from taxation, depending on their level of disability. So I just want to make mention of that. I sent an email yesterday, there is a plan to have a luncheon with the South Central Delegation this Monday to discuss the homeless infrastructure funding grant that was placed in the governor's budget of 40 million. And so we're hopeful, if any time allows, that we can kind of squeeze in just a quick plug on our legislative platform. But Chairman Beatty will be addressing the South Central delegation on the homeless infrastructure funding and answer any questions on that particular item. Just want to make mention that I continue to keep all of our elected officials and staff up to date on anything regarding legislative platform items, and of course, our bill tracking that we hear from our lobbyists. As we know, the legislature can move rather quickly, so I do keep them aware. And then I do want to just put out a plug for the public. If they're interested in hearing, the House and Senate hearings, they can go to the Legislature's YouTube channel, and they can find that on their website at kansaslegislature.org/li. And I'm going to shift gears real quick on our federal platform. I've sent staff and elected officials information on our current federal platform and asked for any edits or any new items to be returned back to me by February 2nd. So that means we'll be coming to you with discussion on our federal platform, and then, of course, hope to have that adopted by the BOCC first of March. So those are my updates, and happy to answer any questions or anything you might have for me.
Very good. Appreciate all the work you're doing, appreciate the work that Watkins Strategies, our group, is doing up there. There's a lot of relationship that's happening right now with our South Central delegation in particular, and we're very hopeful that our legislative platform is going to be perceived well up there, and we're going to get a lot of movement. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for that update, good job on that. I've been listening to some of the hearings up there, and again, I always discover opportunities for us to do a better job of messaging issues back. It was one that came up yesterday in the Elections Committee regarding, they claim that Johnson County has electronic machinery that can sort paper, the original paper ballots in an audit. And I'm not familiar with that equipment, I'm not familiar with that technology, but they're in the process of probably limiting audits to original paper ballots being sorted. So if you have a countywide audit, like we did on the Value Than Both Amendment, for example, this could be fairly complicated, to sort the original paper ballots into essentially ballot styles for every precinct. It's a pretty big challenge to know how to do that. So the question I have is, is Johnson County in fact doing that? Is that misinformation? Does this equipment actually exist? Because we'd have to sort that, those ballots into probably around 800 different piles, if you will. Okay? So that's, it seems very difficult to do that. And with that in mind, I think we need to respond to that, let that committee know the truth of their. I know there's a huge debate on tax right now, and I think if no one's following that, I would just encourage us to be aware of what's in that tax bill. Certainly, it's going to impact the state of Kansas, and I think all of us will have an impact, especially as we govern. The state's ability to provide grant funds may be impacted on this as well. I am following a lot of legislation again this year. This is, again, a great opportunity. I echo the comments of Chairman, I think our lobbyist team is doing a tremendous job, and I think that we are, we're doing a lot of really good work right now. The issue with the homeless infrastructure bill, the governor put $40 million into the base budget, which I think was huge success, but I understand from talking to some of the folks up there that know what's going on, there seems to be an intent to strip that out of the budget, at least temporarily, and it would be a debate, legislative bill will be debated and passed by the legislature potentially, that would restore that funding with some structure and some rules. And so we met last Friday with some legislators, and that bill, the bill draft that would do that is being written right now by the reviser and should be ready by the end of this week. I would expect by meeting, well, by early next week, we'll see a bill number on that. And so we will probably see a draft bill come to us within a day or two from today regarding the pieces of that structure that we need, that was discussed last Friday. Anyway, the burden's going to be upon us to get that bill written in a way that satisfies the concerns of the legislators, and that we have to advocate passionately for its passage. It is not going to pass without a lot of work on our part to get that to pass. And so I can tell you that right now, this is going to be an uphill battle, and I think right now for us to see monies set aside for homeless, the multi-agency center MAC infrastructure program that we're talking about, for us to have that funding left alone or available to Cedric County is going to be very difficult. So we all need to be engaged in that. Thank you, Chairman.
Appreciate your comments on that. Other questions or comments on legislative issues for Tanya? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much for all the work you're doing. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee Reports.
Committee Reports. Any reports we'd like to share with the public on the committees we're on? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Very briefly, we had the Zoo Board meeting yesterday. We've brought five new members to the Zoo Board, and we look forward to working with them in the future. We learned that there may be a fifth elephant that is expecting in 2025, so that's exciting news. We know for a fact there's four. Probably in March, they'll be able to do the blood tests and find out if the fifth is going to be expecting. They're working on the elephant enclosure, because little billy elephants can get out of the enclosure right now, so we have to baby-proof the enclosure to make sure that we can keep them all there. So that's exciting news. The Wild Lights was a very successful event. It did bring in a number of people, not quite as many as the first year, but more than we had last year. The neat thing about it is that the Wild Lights changes, and that's what brings people back, because they're going to see something different. If you missed it this year, you missed a spectacular set of Wild Lights. It is amazing. In addition, the Stingray Cove will be opening probably the end of March or so. We'll be bringing those back. They're already getting ready in February to start treating the water to make sure it's ready to bring those back. So there's a lot of exciting things happening over at the zoo. Our membership holds at about 17,000, so we'd love to expand the membership of the zoo. So if you're not a member of the zoo, it is definitely something that you might want to contemplate. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Appreciate the updates, appreciate the elephants. Cedric County's have exciting times. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much. As we're talking about the zoo, I also want to talk about Exploration Place. I'm really excited about some things coming up there. This Friday, Bricktopia opens, which, there's a million Legos that your kids can go and play with. I don't know about you, but my kids, especially my son, loves Legos. And so I can see this room being just madness for a while while this is going on, but it's really exciting. And there's three actual things that are going to be opening up with Bricktopia, which is a million brick madness, the brick dinos, and a drift, just different ways to see the Jurassic built in Legos, and kind of a drift is, what does that look like with Lego Spout in the ocean? So there's just, there's a lot coming up there. Another announcement that was just made is that the Wichita Foundation is going to be the sponsor for the new amphitheater going up, and that will be completed this fall. Really excited about that. If you've gone to Exploration Place to see the drone show, you know that spectacular view that's right there, and so having a really nice amphitheater is just going to be wonderful to bring concerts and all kinds of things there. So that's a really big deal that we get to celebrate this year. And then, don't forget, Death by Chocolate is March 2nd, so get your tickets soon. They will sell out. That's always the best time to have there. It's their biggest fundraiser of the year, so looking forward to that as well. So just really exciting things happening both at the zoo and at Exploration Place soon. Thank you.
Very good. They just announced a million-dollar gift to Exploration Place for the 2.0 project, really excited about the direction that we're heading in our Cedric County Zoo and Exploration Place. Any other committee reports? Okay, next item.
Other.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to just to share my heart this morning, and again, I want to be very careful to not cause any problems for Cedric County organization because of words that I might share this morning that may raise other questions. But, you know, we had another tragic fire that happened on January 7th, 2024. We're still talking about the fire that happened back on October 22nd, I think, of 2023, where Paley Podeski passed from that fire tragically, and we're trying to figure out what went wrong, what was done correctly, and what opportunities do we have to do things better and differently. And I think that there's some things we've already implemented as a consequence of the discussion regarding the Brick Hollow apartment fire that happened last October. Couple of those things, I know that our Director of 911 shared with us just last staff meeting last Tuesday, that it's our intent, I believe, to bring calls that may be publicly discussed or have a public interest to the commission and discuss those at those staff meetings. And again, she did talk about the 4560 South Hydraulic Fire that happened back in January 7th. So appreciate that. I think that's a step in the right direction. Again, more communication, more transparency, those are certainly things we want to embrace, at least I do. And knowing more about what's happening, you know, being able to admit upfront, things that we maybe weren't done exactly perfectly, that we would like to learn from those things and do better going forward, I think that that's always a healthy discussion. So again, having 911 bring those items to us at staff meeting, I think is certainly a very welcome way to communicate and help us all understand better what's going on. Second of all, I know that, at least it's been discussed in some groups, and I think that we haven't implemented this just yet, but I think a long time ago, when we had more staff, there was shared experiences. Other words, people in whatever part of public safety that they serve in, they would have opportunity to see the other sides of public safety. For example, if you're an EMS paramedic, you might get the chance to spend a day with a fire department and see what they do and learn how they do their job, and that shared experience is very good. And I think that needs to include 911. So I know there's been some discussions about that, shared experience program being back implemented. Again, as long as we have enough staff to do this, I think it's always a healthy thing to see how people, other people do their jobs. That shared experience will help, I think, all of our staff that provides those services to see how other people do their jobs and have maybe a better understanding exactly how things work. I don't think it's been implemented yet, but I believe that's being discussed still. There's been some discussion about having firefighters help with dispatch. I'm not sure where we are with that discussion, but I do know that they have a greater awareness, perhaps, of what happens with firefighters, and so having more firefighters involved in helping with dispatching firefighters is always a, I think, a very good, a good idea. We need to explore that more. The idea that we would reduce the burden from our call takers to actually do dispatch is also being discussed, and I think there's a staff burden to have more staff to separate those out for every day, 24/7, but I do think that's a goal. At least, it's a goal of mine. Again, I'm not sure that we officially have that goal, but I do know that's a goal. I do have a couple of questions. One of those is to the investigation that we've talked about, that we'd be looking at the Brick Hollow apartment fire, we were basically looking at the entire process from beginning to end. Does anybody have a status as to what's the current status? Are we still writing the scope of the investigation, or are we taking this out to bed? What's the status currently?
Good morning. Again, Commissioners, Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. Friday before last, the Purchasing Director for Cedric County passed the first draft of the RFP for a third-party post-incident review to the City of Wichita. Earlier this week, City of Wichita and Cedric County got together, the purchasing directors, the assistant city manager, assistant county manager, legal counsel got together and went through that first draft. Currently, some revisions to that draft are being accomplished right now, and so we are very close to a final product that we can release for vendors to start looking at and receive proposals back sometime in the near future. That's the status on that.
Okay. Thank you for that. And so it's moving forward, but again, apparently it's going to take quite a while to get this out, and then, of course, to get the data back is going to take, you know, a lengthy process, I assume. So I don't know, we have a date, we think we might see some response back to that. Is there any idea, is this a year out, or is this, how long out do you think the response will be?
As I recall, and what we're working on is, if we can get this thing published, we were shooting for the end of January to have it published, and we're getting close to that. And I think the Purchasing Director had laid out a timeline whenever he spoke a few meetings ago. Kind of what we're hoping is that we're able to get responses back within about 45 days to 60 days, depending on if vendors have questions that we have to respond to, and if we have to do any kind of Second Amendment to the original RFP. We're hoping that they can start work. That would put us end of March, 60 days. And if they can get to work, what we're hoping is by mid to late summer, July, August, early August, that we, that they have been able to come in, gather the data, do the, do the analysis, and maybe be able to start providing some feedback.
Okay, so, and again, I think that sounds, that sounds what I would, from based on what I understand how the process is going to work, that seems like the timeline I would expect as well. I, I know that you have done this, Mr. Leeds, as well as I think some of the Commissioners have as well. I've spent a lot of time thinking about this and talking about this and studying this. I've been gathering data. I've got a lot of data. And I think there is some low-hanging fruit. Again, I think some, some of the response of what we're doing, some of the changes being made are, are, are in response to anecdotally, without the study, without the results of the study, but anecdotally saying that we see that there's a thing, we can, we can solve this right here. And whether it be training, or whether it's, let me ask one other question. I know there's been some, there's some discussion about the community-based 911 advisory group. What's the status of that right now?
So coming out of the, during the course of the Community Task Force work, it was determined that we would initiate a Citizens Advisory Board for 911. We have a, we have a professional Wichita-Sedgwick County Advisory Board, which is your professional law enforcement, fire, EMS, and some other folks that are appointed by city and county manager who sit on that advisory board. We are creating, the Director of 911 is creating a Citizens Advisory Board so that it brings in those other users of the system so that they become familiar with the system, the way it works, and it's so that they can give some direction and guidance on what, from a citizen's perspective, might be helpful in 911. Where we're at with that is that it should come before you on an agenda here within the next couple of three weeks for you to approve that board so that it can then be, we can push out applications for folks who are interested and get that board populated.
Thank you for that. Just a couple of comments about the Brook Hollow apartment fire. You know, there was someone, there was some just, some debate about, you don't have to answer the question. This is only not a question. It's more of a comment. There was some debate about whether or not the dispatcher should have, you know, transmitted information over the Tac channel or, or over the disp, am I saying the right word?
Ops channel.
Ops channel. And I think that's really, that's just a policy, policy definition, if you will. And I don't know if that's been resolved yet or not, but I do know that firefighters and perhaps 911 have different opinions about what's supposed to happen. And, and I don't know if we've actually resolved that conflict yet, but to me, that's one of those low-hanging fruit things. I, I think one of the, at the end of the day, we received some criticism because some information went out on what some people said was the wrong channel. And I don't know that that was necessarily wrong because I believe that there was an intention, if you will, to do it the way they did it. But because I think that's the way, that, what, that's what some people thought was the correct thing. So whether that's right or wrong, I think that's a matter of debate. But again, if we, if someone believes there's a better way, or a way that should be changed, I guess that's the, that's the discussion that needs to happen. Is this something that's going to be, you don't have to answer the question if you don't want. Is this something that's being discussed future, or is that something that's already been resolved?
So to speak to that, a disconnect between past policy and preferred practice on the part of area fire departments and in conjunction with 911 is where that occurred on Brook Hollow. I may not have said that very clearly, but 911 had policy from the past, and preference and practice had overridden that to some degree. Since Brook Hollow, before Brook Hollow, but since Brook Hollow, the Deputy Director for 911 is meeting regularly with the Deputy Chiefs from the three paid professional fire departments in this county. And they have been continually discussing their preference and their desire of when dispatchers should come up on their Tac channel and potentially interfere with their fire ground operations on that channel and when they should not. Currently, it's my understanding that the Deputy Director and Director of 911 made it clear that they were reverting back to the written policy as it exists, that they would broadcast on the Tac channel per policy until all parties had concluded what they want it to be permanently in the future. So that's my understanding that that's the way they're working now, and that they are specifically in cooperative discussions. The three Deputy Chiefs and the Deputy Director of 911 are having cooperative conversations routinely about this and other issues as it relates to policy and operations, so that they're all on the same page.
So next I'll talk about, this may be a comment, maybe it's a question, but on the Brook Hollow apartment, just so everyone understands, when the call came in, the first firefighters arrived there just right at the five-minute mark. So initially, because it came in as an apartment fire, they did dispatch. According to my records, they dispatched, I believe, 14 units, and I believe there was three others that self-dispatched. I mean, there was 32 firefighters that were dispatched initially. First firefighters arrived there roughly at the five-minute mark. And they could see fire from a long distance away, which is why the second alarm was called in. And now, and now, and there was a mistake made regarding the implementation of the second alarm. There was some technology misunderstandings and things like that. But again, I think that the training regarding that mistake has been fully addressed. And I believe that if the, if we wanted to know what's been done on that, I think that we've, we've had a very good response in terms of making sure people know how to do, not, not let that happen again. But so the issue of the second alarm issue, I think, has been resolved. Again, I'm sure that we can continue talking about that going forward. But in time, in, in terms of not being a, a good response to this, I think there was, I want people to know, there was 14, I think, I think, three other trucks self-dispatched, so 17 trucks altogether were dispatched. And the first ones got there within five minutes. And there was some debate about whether or not they, they should have said the apartment number 306. And again, I think there's an opportunity there, but I'll say this, I've been over to the apartments many times, taken lots of pictures. And the fire was contained primarily at the stairwell between 304 and 303, and then above that, 305 and 306. All six of those units had people in them. All six of those units have a story to tell. Five of those units, people got out. Some of them had injuries. Three of them had injuries. Three of those apartments, the occupants had injuries. Unfortunately, Paley Podeski, who was in 306, who made that, that very first call, she's the one that passed. What I want to know is, again, this is not, I'm not asking a question right now, but I'm disturbed by the fact that apparently that search for her apartment didn't happen until 32 minutes into that call. I'm angry about that. I don't have a good answer. I think the public needs to know the whole story. I don't know why that happened, and I grieve for her loss. But there's more to the one side of the story here. I think mistakes were made by, by more than just one person. There's a lot to be learned here. So again, I'm looking forward to the investigation. I'm looking forward to that report. It needs to go from the very beginning of that first call to the very end. I want to know exactly what was done. So that's, that's one topic. The second topic refers to this January 7th event. Unfortunately, Patsy Beard, who was 91 years old, made that first call. And her call came in at 7:11 a.m. on Sunday morning, January the 7th. There was a good response, actually, in terms of the firefighters got there very quickly. They sent, they dispatched one unit. I think two showed up, actually, and an EMS paramedic was also dispatched. They weren't sure initially if this was a medical call or a fire call. Here's my problem. It was hard to understand. I've listened to that call. I can't tell how many, how many times now. And on the, on the, on the hind, on the tail end of the Brook Hollow apartment fire, one thing that was criticized was we didn't say the, we didn't ever say the words apartment 306. And GPS actually told you it was right there, but for whatever reason, 306 was never actually part of the conversation. The GPS in this location was 2.1 miles away. That's a problem. Second of all, when the dispatcher asked to confirm the address, they never got a solid answer. It's hard to understand what's being said. But what was said was the word "fire" apparently was said about 33 seconds into the call, into the second call, about 22 seconds into the call. There was some confusion as to what is on fire. And there was, the, the call taker asked multiple times, what's on fire? What's going on? But they spent most of their time trying to get the address. They spent almost, again, I tried to count how many times they asked the different questions. They asked about the address multiple times, and they never got a solid affirmation from the caller that this is the right address. And in terms of the lot number, what lot number is this? What lot, what lot number is this? That question was asked multiple times, many, many times during this call, and they were not able to get a good answer. And it's unclear whether or not the firefighters would see the fire when they arrive because sometimes things are internal to the structure. On the tail end of the Brook Hollow apartments, if I was thinking, if I was a call taker, I'd be thinking to myself, the number one thing you have to deal with right now is where is this fire? If it's, you know, is it a fire? Whatever the emergency is, where is it? Because you have to assume right now, they may not, they may not, may or may not be able to see the fire as they drive up like they could at the Brook Hollow apartments. Okay? Having said that, the word "fire" was uttered by the caller. And when you don't have more information about what the fire, what do you mean by the word "fire"? There have been some calls. I'll just say this. I rode with the fire department, one of the stations. I went out on a day, I spent a day with them, and we got a call. And it was a garage fire. And we were the first ones dispatched. We went straight to the fire. We were there in a few minutes. And in a few minutes, we, the, the fire was put out and the problem was taken care of. But 12 fire trucks showed up to that incident. I'd say a majority of those, actually several of them, self-dispatched. And my takeaway was this, you know, this was a fairly small fire, but you have such enormous response. And I know someone in the media, was talking to media, said, "I'd rather have a greater response than what's needed than have a, a greater need and not a great, not, not an adequate response." Okay? And I understand that. I agree with that. But when you have a small fire and you have 12 units show up, some of them self-dispatched, it seems like almost it's overdone. But the, the flip side of that is, when somebody says the word "fire" and you don't have any more data, to send one tire, fire truck, and again, two squads that showed up, but then, okay, my data shows we dispatched one, to me is not an adequate response. I don't want to get in any trouble. But I'd say, yeah, this policy needs to be driven by the Commissioners, not just by staff. If staff wants to have a policy that says, "We don't want to send too many fire trucks", I understand that concern, but it's really, we want to make sure we send an adequate and reasonable response to every call. Someone says the word "fire", if you don't have any more data, you have to assume it's a structural fire. And I think that sending at least three units on a fire call would be reasonable. I wish we'd have sent three. Three, by the way, when they got there, these two fire squads did, in fact, get access to the mobile home and were able to get her out very quickly. So they had a great response. It was very quick, and they did a great job. And at the end of the day, I don't think the outcome changed in any way because of anything that's been done. But what I'm concerned about is the fact that we dispatched one and two showed up. I would like to see we would dispatch three because we didn't have any more data. If someone says, "My house is engulfed in flames", yeah, you send a huge number of trucks. If someone says, "I need, I have an emergency and you have no idea what's going on", then you send a small response perhaps to find out what's going on. If someone says the word "fire" and you have no other data, to me, three, three trucks would be, I would call that a moderate response. And if you see flames as you're driving up, you, you, you obviously bring in more. But I think to bring in at least three trucks in that situation, when the word "fire" has been uttered, and you know the word "fire" was said, and you have no idea what else that means, then three trucks would be, would be reasonable. I wanted to speak to this this morning because, again, there's been a lot of criticism. I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the only one that has an opinion here. When we sit back and we're quiet, we don't say anything publicly, we get criticized. And I don't, and I understand that. I would criticize this too. Partly why I'm on this bench today is I criticize people who are elected officials who aren't willing to speak up. This policy needs to make sense. And right now, if there is a policy of trying to minimize our dispatch, when we have no other data, I think that's the wrong policy. So I would just ask us to review that to something that's moderate. I don't want to get us in trouble with all my ideas here. I'm not, I'm not the only person here that has an, has an opinion. I'm not the ultimate policymaker. But I want to share my personal opinion. These are my ideas. These are my feelings. This is my, my opinion on, on what should be looked at here. So what's the takeaway from the passing of Patsy Beard? My response is, I think that we, we ought to look at that policy and how many trucks we send on a, on a, on a call where the word "fire" is uttered and you have no other data. I am proud of the firefighters that got her out quickly. I'm sorry for her passing, but I think that that's low-hanging fruit. Second of all, I'd like to know why GPS was off, was off, 2.1 miles. We criticized the response of the apartment 306 because of the GPS discussion, yet here we are, another call, very similar to this, where it's a 2.1 mile error. I don't understand why that, why that happened. So overall, I think 911 did a pretty good job. I think they followed policy. One thing they did not do was send more trucks, but I think that may be policy-driven more than, more than their personal choice. And so I'd like to have that policy reviewed. With that, I'll say thanks to 911 folks. I appreciate what they do. I know it's a very hard job. It's easy to second, second guess and quarter, you know, Monday morning quarterback armchair these things. But I, I, I just want to say, it is time for to have, it's time for us to have a discussion. And if the policy is incorrect, let's fix it. We don't need to wait necessarily till August of 2024 to make, to make changes. If the policy is wrong today, and we believe it's wrong, let's get it fixed. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Still under other, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Rusty, thank you very much for being here today. I, I have some concerns, and some of these concerns can be alleviated by getting this RFP out and getting the results back. As I agree with Commissioner Howell, that there's a lot of people being criticized unjustly. And we need to get that RFP out. We need the results back. A little concern about the RFP. Boiler painted most of the front, boiler paint most of the back, a small portion of it in the middle is the scope. Most of the scope is review, 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 review. The bottom line is somehow it needs to be very clear that we want an end-to-end review of every single individual and organization that was involved in, in the fire. And I don't know that the RFP says that specifically. So until we can get that, we're going to get a lot of rocks thrown at us. There's a lot of misinformation out there right now. So the sooner we can get the RFP out and get the results back that, that specifies what we want specifically, is that end-to-end review, I think the better off we are because I, I am really disappointed in some of the rhetoric that's coming across to, towards the county on what's happening when, when there's false information. And we can't react to that. We need facts, and that's what the RFP will give us. So Rusty, thanks for everything you do. Thanks for all of our staff. I think that a lot of information will come out that will help us in the future. But right now, we need, I hate to say it because we keep getting stones thrown at us and we don't react, but I think at this point in time, we don't need to react. We, we'll just have to deflect those stones until we can get the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions on the advisory boards. The first one, the one that we've had for a while, can you tell us how long we've had that advisory board?
The Wichita-Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Advisory Board has been in place since, it may not be exact, 1977.
Ish.
When, when the city and county decided to consolidate Emergency Communications Dispatching for the city and county, which was in the mid to late 70s. The original agreement between the two entities formed this Wichita-Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Advisory Board. It evolved a couple of times whenever the agreements were revised, in the 80s, and in the early 90s was the last time. But this board has been in effect continually. And then after the last agreement, which transferred operating and budgetary control of the consolidated center department from city to county, two additional positions were added, one for the city manager, one for the county manager, before it was fire chiefs and police chiefs. And then since that time, since it's dispatching for every municipality, every fire, every police department in the county, seats have been added through the bylaws to include those suburban law enforcement and fire entities to have representation on this board as well. So it's been in, in existence for that period of time.
Who, can you give us just like an overall, a high view of who's all on that board?
Sure. The, by resolution, Wichita Chief of Police, the sheriff, Wichita Fire Chief, the County Fire Chief, the county fire chief, the Derby Fire Chief, and the Derby Police Chief, because they are now a city of the first class. There is a representative that is appointed by the suburban fire chiefs. So one person comes to those meetings as a voting member to represent them. Any of them can attend, because it's an open meeting. And then there's a representative chosen by the Cedric County Police Chiefs who represent their interests. And again, all of them can come, but they have one person who's a voting member. This county manager appoint, his appointee is our IT director, since there's so much technology involved with 911. On the city side, the city manager appointed the assistant city manager, Dante Martin, to be his representative. EMS has a seat, emergency management has a seat. I think that's it, without a list in front of me, but I think I covered, I think there's twelve members total, voting members.
So fire has a large part in the advisory board?
Fire has county fire, city fire, Derby fire, and suburban fire representation, four out of the twelve.
Okay. And you said their chief is on that. Do we, have we heard from Wichita Fire Chief on some of these matters?
Yes, we have. And I'll take just a second. To be clear, while we're working on our RFP for an after, after incident review, or after incident investigation of the Brook Hollow fire, I don't want people to get the wrong impression that we're sitting idly and nothing is happening. The reality is that there were meetings that were occurring before that. There's currently the advisory board. The Wichita Fire Chief suggested that they submit, they form subcommittees on that. So as of the last meeting, July eleventh, I believe, the fire departments did form a fire subcommittee, which consists of the three Derby, Wichita, and county fire chiefs are the subcommittee, so that they can meet and talk about issues specific to fire, and bring those back to the larger board and to the emergency communications administration. And so that there's accountability there, there's public, there's public discussion about what they decided in their subcommittee, and they brought it back to the large board, and everybody's aware, and everybody can keep track of what progress is being made. In addition to that, again, the deputy director of 911 is meeting with the deputy directors of those three departments. And last meeting, they had a discussion about how suburban fire would not be part of the subcommittee, but would work through the chiefs association and bring a collective voice, so that they weren't doing fifteen different things, that they would bring back a collective voice from suburban fire with anything specific that they wanted to work with 911 on. Law enforcement elected not to have a subcommittee. They were comfortable with the way that they're doing business, working directly with, through their departments with 911, so they did not feel that they needed a subcommittee. And EMS said the same, that they work directly with their deputy director, or deputy chief works directly with the deputy director of 911. They were comfortable, they did not need to be part of a subcommittee. But those deputy chiefs meet with the deputy director at least on a monthly basis, and more often, to talk policy and operations. The deputy director of 911 is meeting with the fire marshal of Wichita at the request of the fire chief, Wichita Fire Chief. I think they're doing that every two weeks. I don't think there's a defined purpose for that meeting, other than they talk about current events or whatever is relevant at the moment. And then, there is also a chiefs working group that was formed whenever CAD was being implemented, that included the Derby Fire Chief, a battalion chief from city of Wichita, and the deputy chief from Cedric County. And that group was specifically formed to talk about issues, fire-related issues with CAD, that they would then share back to emergency communications and/or our IT, who was working with Tyler Technologies on that implementation. They are still functional in some degree, although it's unclear how they are going to work in conjunction with the formal subcommittee of the advisory board, so the chiefs are working that out. But there are multiple layers of conversations and discussions about cooperatively modifying policy and working to ensure that the fire boards in 911 are working in a way that meets the needs of the fire departments in the county. All the fire chiefs have certain common needs, but then each community is a little bit different, county is different, because they're, they've got a large area to cover with nine stations. Derby is a smaller confined city, and Wichita is a larger sprawling city. So they all have unique needs to their jurisdictions, but then they have common needs. And so they are working through those issues. They have response profiles. Each one establishes their own response file, profiles, how many units they want to, sent to a structure fire, how many they want sent to a grass fire, and what pieces of equipment. All of those things are in place and programmed into CAD, or should be programmed into CAD. So as the commissioner indicates, if the county commission wants to help direct policy on certain types of response, that's something that also, I've told him I would work through Chief Williams. And Chief Williams could work with his peers to talk about what type of response profile they want programmed into CAD, so that if a citizen uses the word "fire," but the call taker can't connect any specific context to that word, how do they want that dispatched? What units and how many and what type do they want sent? So that 911 has a consistent way of doing that based on the fire chief's preferences. And if I guess if they can't come to a consensus, and if this board wants to give specific direction, that's what your job is, as you are the people, and you speak for the people. So I don't want people to get the impression that we're sitting on our hands, doing nothing, waiting for an RFP. Emergency Communications Administration is working continually with fire administration. And I understand that a bargaining unit, the president of the bargaining unit, who is their lobbyist and their bargaining agent, and their executive board, they have an opinion. But their fire chiefs and their deputy chiefs and their fire marshals are working directly with 911 administration to address the issues. And that's where it gets a little bit strange and difficult to manage, is the people who are running the organizations are trying to fix problems, and people represented by the bargaining unit have a different opinion and are going in a different direction to convey that information. And we're just trying to manage that the best that we can. We don't want to get into the game of pointing fingers and throwing stones and arguing about petty things when we're trying to resolve the problems that need to be resolved, and come to common agreements on policy, so that it's the best thing for the citizens that we're trying to serve. And I know that was along with it, I'm sorry, but.
No, I appreciate that. So I just want to make it clear that 911 has been working with fire chiefs well before this, and we will continue to work with them long after these incidents. And, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to do our best in these departments. And I am hearing a lot of criticism about us not being forcefully responsive. And I think there's something to be said about waiting for the full scope of what happened, like Commissioner Howell said, from the call to the last truck leaving, because we, as leaders, cannot, even if it's unintentionally, spread misinformation. Because spreading misinformation, however you do it, is, it's dangerous. It undermines public safety completely. It does not just hit one thing, but it can, it's not just 911 that it impacts. It's our fire, it's our police, it's our sheriff. We just have to be very careful in how we handle these things. But I am very glad that your comments were so great on what we're currently doing, because we're not sitting waiting for anything. We are keeping the public's safety at our first and foremost in our best interest here, and making sure that every policy change that we make is appropriate, and that we've worked with the right people who know these situations better than what we would, because we're not fire, we are not 911 professionals. And so we need to make sure that we're also listening to the experts. I am really grateful that even through all of this, our 911 department is better staffed today than it has been for a very long time, which is going to allow us to be able to do things like have fire and police sit at our 911 stations with us, and allow operators to be out in the field and kind of see things from different vantage points. I think that's an incredibly useful thing for all of us to be able to experience that. I know we've had the opportunity up here to sit and follow along with people, and it's such an eye-opening experience to see what these individuals go through every single day in public safety. And so we are incredibly grateful for 911. We're incredibly grateful for fire and police, and everybody who does their job to take care of the residents and our families that live in Cedric County. So thank you for explaining that. I know that there's frustration, like I said, on what we've been talking about so far, but we are working on these things. And please know that things are only going to get better from here, but we have to make sure that we can keep these relationships intact, because even when we talked to Alora in the staff meeting, she made a comment about why relationships are so extremely important with these different departments, because you really rely on each other in these public safety. And when fires and anything that's just high-stress environment, if you can lean in on your partners, that's what we need to be able to do. So thank you for being here, for addressing some of those things, and make sure that everyone knows that we appreciate the work that they do. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Rusty. I'll put a bow on this conversation, and then this meeting. As we head into twenty-five budget planning next month, we know that staffing stability is important. It's important in the sheriff's office, it's important EMS, forensic science center. It's important all across the board, because if you don't have staffing stability, you cannot perform effective, efficient, good service. I'm not prioritizing by any stretch, but I will tell you that it is, it is laser-sharp focus, the impact of staffing stability when we look at 911. When you look in October twenty twenty-one, 911 had a sixty-two percent staffing, sixty-two percent. That number at the end of the year was ninety-two percent. There's eight people waiting, and then two people that have reapplied that were previously employed there. At the end of the year, they had nine call takers. Presently today, they have twenty-eight. Oh, since twenty twenty-one, the dispatchers, on average, have received a forty-two percent pay increase. I'm just saying that because there's still more work to do. We have more work to do, not just at 911, across particularly public safety, but 911 in particular. They cannot do their jobs well unless we get those directors across the board, and those dispatchers, those call takers, unless we get them the resources they need to do their job well. And I can speak for myself, but I have a pretty good opinion, based on my relationship with my four colleagues up here, that that is the number-one focus this year, to make sure we have staffing stability at all these departments, but 911 in particular. They are the front door to public safety in this community, the conduit to public safety. And we have to make sure that they have the staffing stability and the resources they need to do their job, and to modernize 911 into what it looks like in today's world. We're determined to do that, to continue to do that. But we made a promise when we agreed, and we took a vote, five oh, we made a promise to our community that we're not waiting till August when this RFP, and we get the report, that we're going to continue that progress. And now, we're going to start now. These conversations are happening, they're ongoing. The data I'm looking at is, I'm encouraged by the data. There's work to do, and we're in it. We're in it to make sure that we have the best 911 system in the entire country. And I think that's a goal that is worthwhile. And it's a goal that we are going to aim to continue to hit. So I would just say staffing stability matters greatly. Those dispatchers, if you're listening, those call takers, if you're listening to this meeting right now, we have got your back. We will do everything we can to make sure that you have the resources you need to do your job well. Now, that's our job, and we will do that well. We're committed to doing that. So, that being said, there is no executive session today. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board today? Okay. Appreciate everyone for being here today. Our meeting is adjourned.